Okay. It is 1:00 PM. We're going to get started. Hello and welcome to today's Committee of the Whole, March 14th. My name is Kate McNauton. I'm a Pickton Ward councillor but represent the municipality as all of us do. I'd like to welcome councillor John Hirsch from afar. He's joining us via Zoom. And I would like to thank the people who are joining us today and my fellow council members, the media and anyone who is here in person, but also if anyone's joining us from home or watching from home for this Committee of the Whole meeting. We're meeting currently in Shire Hall, Pickton. And on the list of items, and pardon me, I should probably read the script I've got. And today's agenda has a list of every item before the committee today for consideration. And the recommended motions are shown in boldface. Copies of the agenda are on our website, so if you're joining us from home, you can consult them. The meetings being livestreamed and any participation, any comments from the audience become part of that livestream. And will be, and the recording will be livestreamed on the county's website and can be viewed by selecting livestream meetings on the bottom right of the county's homepage at thecounty.on.ca. Under Agenda Item 6, I'm going to be asking for comments from the audience. We don't have any registered comments currently. If anyone wants to speak on this section of the agenda at this meeting, you're welcome to do so if you're here. Members of the public who wish to provide comments at future meetings can contact the clerks to register. And their address is clerks@pecounty.on.ca. If you do participate, your name will be included in the committee minutes and will form part of the public record and be posted to the county's website. I'd like to remind everybody that we might differ in opinions, but it's important in this room to be respectful. And for those who are in attendance, please do refrain from clapping as it does not add to the discussion and it's in contravention of our procedural bylaw. Any motion made at this meeting is not final until the committee meeting of March 26, 2024, at which time the council might approve, amend, defer or otherwise change the motion that's made by committee. In the event of a fire, we've got the applicable exits in Shire Hall. Two applicable exits. And, but if you're at home, I hope you know where your exits are. For those here, please mute and limit your use of cell phones. Thank you, and I will use that as my reminder. And I've just turned off my phone. So first, can I get a motion to confirm the agenda? Thank you councillor Harrison and councillor St Jean.
I'm sorry. This is a Harrison-St Jean motion that the agenda for the Committee of the Whole meeting of March 14th, 2024 be confirmed.
All in favor? Thank you, that carries. Is there any disclosure of pecuniary interest? Or general nature thereof? None so far? That's a good sign, thank you. We do have a deputation listed today and I'm going to turn it over to our, to Andrew Sigward? Yes? Oh, good. President and CEO of Tourism Industry Association of Ontario. So thank you and welcome. And take it away, you've got 10 minutes.
Thank you. Thank you very much Chair McNauton, Mayor Ferguson, members of council, county staff and members of the community. It's a pleasure to be here in this beautiful Shire Hall, council chambers and of course, beautiful Prince Edward County. My name is Andrew Sigward. I'm the president of the Tourism Industry Association of Ontario. And we are an advocacy and capacity building organization that serves tourism across the province. Thank you for permitting me to join you today to provide a deputation in support of our members in the county as well as Visit the County and some of its great work. TIO was one of the early supporters of the municipal accommodation tax framework that came online in and around late 2017. And we saw it as very progressive legislation with two important goals. Goal number one was to help drive consistent revenue to grow the visitor economy and to help market and get product development. And goal number two was to provide consistent funding for municipalities to help plan for future growth, to meet the growth needs and also to layer down some infrastructure. So the roots of the vision was municipal and industry partnerships. And if you stand where we are today and you think about what we've all been through over the last three or four years, it was quite a vision and I think it has served us well. I'd really like to congratulate the municipality and industry for your innovation in adopting the municipal accommodation tax framework. You're one of only about 15% of municipalities in the province that has adopted such a framework. And I'm sure you're all well aware of the complexities of doing so. But what it's really done is it's put you ahead. You're in a much stronger competitive place against municipalities across the province. And your industry is growing as a result, so these are all great things. And of course, you're earning more revenues to help manage growth. I'd like to really congratulate local accommodators, all the tourism operators and Visit the County on the incredible success that they've delivered. You've all seen their annual report and you're going to hear from them after me today. And they've really driven some incredible metrics. A couple that really stood out to me were, was the growth in visitor spend and that ongoing economic recovery for the region. I think one point that really needs to be underscored is the depth of community collaboration that you see from this organization. They have brought hundreds of tourism players together from all subsectors to work together. And really, the secret sauce of a good DMO and a high functioning mat is community collaboration. And of course, the $600,000 in municipal revenues is also a great win and a strong metric that no doubt, everybody wants to see grow. As you are all contemplating the results of the last year and looking ahead, what I thought I would do is share some best practices from other regions in the province and beyond, where mats have evolved and those that are strengthening what they're seeing. And I thought I would share that for you with some insights. Hopefully can help in your future planning and of course, I'm happy to take any questions after. As you all know, when mats are new, they can be very confusing in a community. And so a lot of people have a hard time understanding what they're for and who the stakeholders are. One of the byproducts of that is you often see interest groups coming forward either to advance their own agenda or to seek some of the funds. And what we're seeing mat municipalities do very well is reinforce the autonomy and the expertise of their DMOM, like Visit the County and your other DMO in the region. They really need that support because what it allows them to do is leverage their board expertise, multi-sectoral as well as their staff to deliver great outcomes. And so, strong mats are really supporting their DMOMs in that independence and autonomy. Another trend we're seeing in destination marketing and management organizations, DMOMs, is that they're expanding their governance models to include not just accommodators, but food and beverage providers, attractions owners, on-farm experiences. It really is diverse and inclusive. And what you're seeing there is a much better outcome and much more collaboration. So bravo to the team, you can see that in their report and clearly, there's more opportunity there. One of the things that is also been proven to be a strong success is when a mat is implemented on the basis of a strong strategic plan. The county developed one in 2021, as you all know, a great development plan. And you can really see the strategy there and how it is woven into the outcomes right now. It was a really strong move. You'd be surprised how many municipalities adopted a mat without a strategy. And in some cases, those dollars just sat in a bank account somewhere and weren't being used. So you're really ahead of the game on that front. With that said, there are some best practices emerging that you might want to take a look at. And this relates to the municipal portion of the funds. A lot of municipalities are taking a closer look and linking their use of those funds to those strategic plans. So with a more purposed and strategic goal to help the visitor economy, but also to mitigate and to manage visitation. So some examples of best practice uses right now include investing in public amenities like trails and green spaces and parks, infrastructure that mitigates congestion such as public parking facilities, public restrooms, sustainability investments and workforce housing initiatives and more. Not only do these investments help the tourism industry grow, but they also contribute to the quality of life for local residents. So it's really a great opportunity. How municipalities are starting to look at this is they're being very creative. They're actually looking at creating special and distinct reserve and investment funds for their dollars and bringing together industry groups and local residents to sit and advise council on how to best plan for that investment and future growth. So it really is a great opportunity to plan for the future. And I know and I think everyone in the room knows the concerns around managing growth and being strategic. So those funds and that kind of approach can really be used to sort of chart your own course for the future. So just a best practice I wanted to highlight and we can share more in the future. Last but not least, just wanted to note that TIO will be working over the next 18 months or so. We're going to be asking for an update to the municipal act to sort of layer in some of these best practices into the regulatory framework. And we really hope that that's going to make mat implementations easier, hoping to learn from all of the things that you've all lived through. And so we look forward to that. And you know, our goal is to make it easier for destinations like you to be more successful. On that note, I'd really like to thank Julianne Sneps and Rebecca Carter for participating with TIO and bringing some of your early learnings and pain points to the provincial stage. It's allowing us to be better advocates for you and to make sure that this program evolves in the future. So with that, congratulations to the team. I'm available for questions and I'm really looking forward to the presentation from Visit the County.
Thanks so much. And we'll see if there are comments or questions from our committee, starting with councillor Nyman and then councillor Grosso.
Thank you, madam chair. Thank you for this. You're talking about best practices, but have you got a list of those that you're going to be taking that to change in the municipal act?
Yeah, correct. So we have, we've got some documentation and I can share after the fact, perhaps via the clerk. But we have a couple of policy positions with some of our early recommendations. Some of them I've highlighted here. And yeah, so we'll be working to advise the province and we're hoping that they might, you know, make this process a little easier. We understand it's going to be at least 18 months. It's part of tax policy, so it's going to be bucketed with much bigger work unfortunately. But we would love to get more insights from you on the ground to help advocate accordingly.
A quick follow-up? So we don't have a list of what you're going to be proposing to put in for best practice?
Not today, no. I'm just letting you know, over the next 18 months, we'll be doing more work. So we have an opportunity to work together on that. But some of the things that I did highlight here include the following. One ask for sure is to help structure the municipal portion of the funds. Right now, it is very general what can be done. And we definitely want to see a little more focus on how those funds can be better used. We actually see that as a barrier right now to municipalities adopting the mat. Because it's so open-ended, what ends up happening is it creates a lot of consternation in the community and folks don't want to go there. They're very fearful that it might, you know, drive unintended consequences. So one of our policy recommendations will be to make it a bit clearer. But there will be a few more. One more I'll share that we're working on, not finalized, is making sure that proper regulatory frameworks for short-term rentals are in place so that it can guide the growth of the short-term rental economy. You've done some great work here on that front to manage that growth. And that'll be, it currently doesn't exist in the regs, so those are a few things. But I'll be happy to come back and share when that list is finalized.
Okay, yeah. I'd like to see, for myself anyways, I'd like to see what you're going to be taking to the province, just before I say yes.
For sure. And again, 18 months, lots of time. The good news is we work very closely with Visit the County. So between our relationships, we'll be able to get your input and share that.
Councillor Grosso.
Thank you, Andrew. One question is, what do you think that we're doing well compared to other regions in the province?
That's a great question. I would say you've had your strategy upfront, which is a game changer. Many places didn't do that. I would say the collaborative frameworks that you have, the level of everyone working together, you can see the shared vision. I think that's a real strength. You also recognize the existing DMF and I think that was a very, very good move. So you've been inclusive versus exclusive. And I think what I've seen in your strategies is you're really looking at, as I understand it, managing future growth so that the economy can grow, but also that the resident experience is also strong and maintained. So to me, those are great starting points. You know, these programs are meant to grow the visitor economy and manage the visitor economy. And I think you've got a good balance of both. So I think it's a strong, it's a strong footing.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor St Jean.
Thank you, madam chair. Thank you for bringing your presentation. I look forward to some of the advocacy work or lobbying work that you're going to be doing with regards to some of the tax regulation around MATs. But you did, you did mention about, very little about the STR issue. As you say, we, I think we've addressed it probably the best, I'm going to say the best that I've seen in any other municipality. It took us a long time to get there, but we're there.
Yeah.
And in certain respects, I think we can be a model for other areas. And I think we have been.
Yeah.
But you mentioned about the province being involved and recently, BC, they have what they call an opt-in program. Do you expect to be doing any lobbying with regards to a provincial or some regulation directly from the province to help a lot of these other municipalities that are either struggling with it or don't even want to look at it?
Yeah. What our recommendations will likely look like is helping the regulatory framework evolve so that it is less burdensome, that it is clearer and that it removes barriers. So you know, that's very kind of 30,000-foot level right now, but that's the philosophy behind it. What those specific recommendations will be will come from deeper consultation. But we want to make sure that they're easier. I mean, with 15% of municipalities opting in right now, they're missing a big opportunity. The way to get there is by municipalities and the local business community working together. You've done that. What I've seen in other jurisdictions is a municipality gets way in front of industry or industry gets way in front of the municipality. And those are the things that slow things down. It's not so much the regs. But the other piece is, and there's a higher level here, and I think you can probably advise me more on this over time. But municipalities, you have very few sources or opportunities to raise more revenues. And you have to absorb more costs, housing, you know, transportation, the list goes on and on. And so part of why we're advocating for changes to the regs is so that more municipalities can lever this tool and earn more revenues. It's a solution, but right now, it still needs some work.
Thank you.
Any further comments or questions? Councillor Pennell.
Thank you and thank you for your presentation. One of my concerns is, have we actually done an evaluation as to how much additional money is going into the municipality from mat tax? Because the one thing we tend to forget is all the staff, office time, whatever that goes into this, any idea on bang for the buck percentage wise?
Yeah, it's a, it's a great question. I would say that those mats and municipalities that are high performing understand those metrics clearly. They have them, they actually set targets for them. You know, an operating rule of thumb for a municipality, you shouldn't be spending any more than 15% or so on admin costs, right? The bulk of the money coming in should be going to future planning. If you're spending more than that on collections and other things, it can be, can be challenging. But as it relates to the DMO and the Destination Marketing and Management Organization, they produce annual reports that talk about their costs, their output, their ROI. So I would, I would advise to look there to see what that, that specific ROI is. Yeah, it really depends on the model.
Thank, quickly, yes.
Just something on a little different method. Right now, we get people that are offering Airbnb and so forth. But we're also getting all kinds that are, I don't want nothing to do with it, again, and getting out. Do we have any records on that? And how, as we move into the future, we can try to hang on to those ones?
Hang on to the overnight visitors, you mean?
The ones that are just giving up on Airbnb.
I see. I actually think that Visit the County could probably provide a little more context on that, on that, that local question. But if I understand your question, you're trying to find out if we've got enough Airbnb operators to sort of drive the economy? Is that your question?
No, not really. My question is, if you get somebody signed up for Airbnb, any place in the province, there are a lot of them
Yeah.
that are choosing not to go again in the next year. Are we getting fulfilled on replacements on that? Is there always a demand? Or can we supersaturate ourselves?
That's a great question, thank you. Thanks for the clarification. It really depends on the market and it depends on the seasons. And one of the things that I would encourage you to think about, and I think Visit the County can talk a bit about this, the last few years have been so volatile. So some of the conditions that have been shaping operators to sort of put their home in or take it out have been outsized. They're not normal. In destinations that have a good, long history of visitation growth, it's pretty consistent. And they stay consistent. So I think some of the volatility of the last few years has been around pandemic response and then some of the challenges recovering from the pandemic. So high costs, labor, and some of the regulatory frameworks sometimes cost a little more. But what I've seen in markets that are more mature from a short-term rental perspective, once they've got a good growth arc and everything is performing well, they tend to be pretty consistent.
Thank you for those answers. I'm just going to do one last quick scan and check with councillor Hirsch, who's joining us from Zoom. No, we're good. So I have a question.
Please.
And it relates specifically to, and thanks for the context that you've provided. I also, one of my big question marks was what councillor Nyman and councillor St Jean identified, which was, wouldn't it be nice to see the list of the criteria that you're looking to propose? So I look forward to seeing that at some point.
I always like to leave you with a little, I'll come back.
Mystery. Nice to have a little bit of suspense. So, but the, one of the things that you've got listed in the, your written contribution is that, and I can't remember the acronym, VBAs, which is
Visitor-Based Assessments, yeah.
Visitor-Based Assessments that include industry participation in municipal planning and prioritization become part of an understanding of best practice with respect to the use of the municipal. So I'm just trying to understand the goal. Like that municipal portion is to help a community like ours, which is resource-strapped, manage all of those pieces of infrastructure that would be invisible to, potentially. I mean, there are a number of things that it could go towards, but certainly potentially, I think in this room, usually where we feel like the largest tourism impact is without sort of a visible connection to visitors would be impacts on infrastructure, impacts on roads, impacts on our rates because some properties don't, don't, aren't paying into that rate-paying pool through every season, it's just some seasons. So there are some sort of inequities created. All of those pieces of the picture that are impacted in our daily lives. How, how does visitor feedback really contribute to that? And for that portion of the money? I can understand how it would fit into the destination development portion of the money very well.
Yeah. And I think you're asking the right question because you sort of want to look at, how does it impact the visitor? How does it impact businesses and how does it impact local residents? Because local residents want to see a level of smart growth and development. And so there's a spectrum right now across the province and in fact, across anywhere that does this. So spectrum on the far left is, or left or right, doesn't matter. On one side is the municipality makes some decisions on their own. They choose a line item, maybe it's general revenues or maybe it's roads. And they'll say, you know what, roads is a priority, we can justify it, we'll put it into roads, everyone feels good about it. That is what I would say, early days and early thinking. Where it's migrating to in the future is much more inclusive and collaborative. It's where local governments are going anyway. So the idea being, take a look at how those funds can be used to improve infrastructure for visitors, for businesses and for residents. And so when you have a plan that looks through that lens, what you end up with is a more robust investment plan. And that was the best practice I was talking about. A lot of municipalities are forming working groups, creating a special fund, having those working groups represent perhaps the voice of visitors, perhaps the voice of residents and industry, and then helping council get some advice on how to best use that. And that's really the best practice, that's where it's moving. And when we talk back to some of the recommendations we'll be making at the province, we're going to be asking them to look at that continuum and give more guidance to municipalities for using those funds in the future.
So now, just to push back on that a little bit, would be, I'm still not understanding where the visitor feedback comes into that, that portion that's to be used. An inclusive and consultative process is always the strongest. I just think there's, there's a conversation that has to take place that, that doesn't include the sort of more trans, I'm going to use, I'm going to quote someone else and say transient. I don't like using that term. Transient participation in this community versus the impacts on the existing resident
Sure.
and, and infrastructure costs.
I fully hear you. You know, prior to joining TIO, I was the president of the Blue Mountain Village Association up in South Georgian Bay. So I, I lived your world. I've been through it, I've seen it. We've gone through a mat implementation. And when I say voice of the visitor, I don't mean invite visitors to come and sit at the council table. But what we used to do is we would very creatively get visitor sentiments through surveys, you know, looking online, seeing what happens in review. And what we often found was visitors gave us feedback that residents stopped talking to us about. So it actually reinforced what residents were looking for. So when there's no public washrooms anywhere, your residents actually suffer that when they try to shop downtown. When there's no public parking for visitors, likely your residents are feeling the same thing. So I'm not suggesting you would, you know, open it up to the visitors to, but you can, you can poll visitors and get insights and bring their voice to the decision-making table and that helps everyone.
Thank you, understood. It's more of a collection of information rather than treating them as a full stakeholder.
That's right. Well, and at the end of the day, it's, it's strategy. So when you have a $600,000 fund and growing, you want all the right elements of a strategy to shape how that can deliver the best ROI for you in the future. So strategies are often bolstered by great input.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I will be back to share and get your feedback on the advocacy stuff.
Great, thanks very much. Can I get someone to put this on the floor? And someone to second it? I'm looking at, I'm looking, okay. So councillor Maynard and councillor Pennell, I think, has, thank you.
Thank you, madam chair. This is a Maynard-Pennell motion that the deputation by Andrew, the president and CEO, Tourism Industry Association of Ontario, to address committee regarding the municipal accommodation tax landscape in Ontario be received.
All in favor? Pardon me, my mic was not on. We've got Charles McKee, Vice Chair of Visit the County, joining us today, even though the, the agenda says Eleanor Cook, who is unavailable. So thank you and welcome to, to you, Charles, and take it away. Looking forward to your presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and greetings to the committee. On behalf of Visit the County, both the staff and the volunteer board of Visit the County, we thank you for the time today. This is going to allow us to present the work that Visit the County has accomplished in 2023, and really the work that supports hospitality and tourism businesses in Prince Edward County. As the chair has said, I'm Charlie McKee, I'm the Vice Chair of Visit the County, and as a former senior leader at Air Canada, at Delta Hotels, at the Canadian Tourism Commission, it's, it's a real honour to work closely with the VTC team and my fellow board members. Our executive director, our hard-working executive director, Eleanor Cook, unfortunately is not here today. She's out of the county on a medical procedure, but she sends her deepest regrets. But I am here today, joined by a couple of people who are working very closely with Visit the County. One is my colleague on the board, Mickey Aaron's, who chairs our government, governance committee. Two, the council delegate on the board, Sam Grasso, this is councillor Grasso, thank you for all the work that you're doing for us. And of course, John Hirsch. So councillor Hirsch, who was one of the founding board members, again, council delegate. So we have tremendous debt of gratitude to this volunteer board. Also, before I start, I jump right into the material, I do also want to thank the previous deputation. So Andrew, thank you for coming, coming down to join us today. It really is, it's very helpful to hear about what's happening outside of the county with regards to municipal accommodation taxes. It's also super helpful to hear that we've got some best practices. So thank you for that. So let's go into the material. As part of your pre-read package, you will have found the submission of the draft version of the annual report for 2023 from Visit the County. It is an, it's a draft, it's a draft version because the audit is still to be completed. The audit commences on the 18th of March. The municipal auditors, KPMG, will be doing their audit as they did in 2022. When the audit is complete, we will be posting this publicly on the Visit the County and Prince Edward County, the municipality websites. The report is pretty complete in terms of really trying to hit on a lot of the attributable results of the activities of Visit the County in 2023. I'm not going to go through all of them in detail, but I do hope you have an opportunity to maybe use this as a resource as we move forward. I will pull out, pull out some of the illustrations of some of the attributable results that we are particularly pleased that we were able to achieve. So, so really, when we think about Visit the County, I think it's important for us to note that we're really here for the businesses that are focused on tourism in Prince Edward County. We are committed to industry-led growth, and I emphasise industry-led. We're working with hundreds of tourism businesses in the county, and they really represent many different sectors, all of them contributing to the total visitor offering. These include accommodations, attractions, food and beverage, events, specialty retail, festivals, heritage, sports tourism, outdoor recreation, and transportation operators. And we achieve the results that we do only through their collective guidance, consultation, and collaboration. And again, an emphasis on the collaboration. We also want to acknowledge the hundreds of accommodation providers in Prince Edward County that helped facilitate the collection of the visitor tax that funds the activities of Visit the County and indeed the municipality. So to them, the commitment is critical to our tourism success, and we're very grateful for that. As we really look at, though, what we, we think about 2023, Visit the County was established only six months prior, so it was established in June 2022. So last year was the first full year. In the first year of operation, a lot of the, the focus was on establishing the right community collaborations. So as a new organisation, we introduced Visit the County to many existing community organisations, whose goals are to build economic, cultural, and social wellbeing of Prince Edward County. We met with over 50 different organisations at the community level, at the regional level, and at the national level, some of them listed here, all of them very well-known to, to, to this audience. We talked, we shared insights about visitation, captured views about Prince Edward County, past, present, and future. But really, together, what we tried to do was assess where their organisational goals may intersect with the tourism marketing activities of Visit the County, and practically how we may collaborate. In 2023, we activated some of the projects immediately, collaborative projects immediately. So, and those are detailed in the report. But these include collaborations with the Great Waterfront Trail Adventure, with the Picton BIA, collaboration and investment with the Prince Edward County's Chamber of Commerce on a visitor information kiosk pilot project, international and domestic media visits with PECWA, the Prince, the Prince Edward County Wine Growers Association, workforce, forced development planning with Loyalist College, county museums on digital support, and work that we did with the Prince Edward County Arts Council on strategy. And more, more on that in the year ahead. So because the work of Visit the County in tourism marketing targets people from outside Prince Edward County, we as locals generally don't see a lot of the work that we're actually doing. Specifically, the work that's being exposed in the advertising and promotional activity we do. Because really, the mission of Visit the County is to attract new dollars into. So much of our activity occurs outside of Prince Edward County. But I wanted to speak a little bit about, describe really what that activity is. Broadly, it's a multi-channel approach to identifying, connecting with the desirable visitors to Prince Edward County. And we do that by any means. It ranges from paying for media or working with media outlets to earn and play stories. We also have our own media platforms, like websites, that are important to connect with visitors. That is not to say that the activity we undertake in the community is not important. And I think as we look forward, there are a number of opportunities in 2024 where you will see Visit the County amplify its presence in the community. Working with the organisations that I have just referenced, as well as actually higher involvement, more visible involvement in many of the things, like the Santa Claus Day Parade. So there are a number of things in the 2024 plan we expect to achieve this year, based and built on the foundations that were established in 2023. And I'll remind you that my colleague Rebecca McKenzie was here just a few weeks ago and presented at that time the 2024 Plan. So that is on, on record. So whether it's through broadcast, whether it's through digital, through print, whether it's through paid, earned, or owned media, it really doesn't matter. The important thing is that we're doing this in a relevant way, and the activities we undertake are the right activities for the business objectives that we want to achieve. Try to focus our activities on what is called attributable result, that is, things that we can measure. And really, I think it's very clear that this is a place of great storytelling. Our businesses have terrific stories to tell about what makes the county and the local culture really a standout. So as Visit the County, as the Destination Marketing Organisation, we attempt to elevate those stories. Those are the stories the community wants to tell. So we create, we design, we invest, we monitor, we report on the advertising investment, while we're stewards of responsible tourism here in the county. So what, how do we practically invest? You can see on the presentations in front of you and on the screen here, a breakdown of, of some of the activity areas that we invest in. Firstly, what I will say is, looking at 2023, about 25% of our available funding was allocated towards GNA, that is, the kind of the, and wages. Some of that wage, some of the salaries were also aimed through contracts. So we have one full-time permanent employee, then we have two contractors. So that's reflected in the 2023 percentages here. So for 2023, we're at about 25%, with remaining 75% in discretionary activity designed to drive demand. Now, the distinction is not, it's a little bit blurred insofar as, for example, unlike certain marketing organisations, we do not rely on advertising agencies. Our in-house social media creator, content creator, essentially does the work that other organisations would go outside for. So, so when we talk about that 25%, it is salaries, it is administration in terms of categorisation, but they are directly attributable to the work we do. Some of the other things that I would really kind of call out on here is, the 75% that is spent on demand-driving activities, they're really, the, typically what we look at is objectives that are centred on either building awareness of the destination, or consideration amongst visitors who know they want to take a summer, summer trip, for example, so maybe considering multiple destinations. And then what we say, what we would call conversion. So actually selecting, booking the destination, booking Prince Edward County. So aligned to those three kind of broad areas of objective, all the activities are really designed to drive demand and help us meet our mission, bringing new tourism dollars, new visitation to Prince Edward County. So a couple of notable achievements that I would like to call out for 2023. Firstly, we did invest in a new website. So the new website is in its final stages of development and will be launched over the next couple of weeks. This is vitally important because it allows us to control our storytelling, our messaging. And as you will see, as the public will see with the new website, it also has new functionalities that we don't, do not currently have on our existing website, including the ability for visitors to search accommodation and be referred to that accommodation for booking. So this is, this is, we're super excited about this, and this will go a long way in allowing us to drive the demand. Second thing that I would like to call out is there has been a visual revitalisation of the, the brand, the tourism brand for Visit the County, both in connection with the website, but then also the work that we're doing in developing our social media content in other kind of creative areas. So this idea of revitalising, kind of investing in the brand, has been very important to keep it fresh, to keep it relevant for target visitors. The other thing we've really put a big focus on is using authentic voices to tell the stories of Prince Edward County. I mentioned the businesses have stories. Well, behind those businesses are the people. And, you know, I would call out, for example, our, like a local campaign that ran very successfully in the summer last year on social media. It really was, it was a celebration of the pride of place that we all enjoy here. Particularly helpful in driving key metrics in social media for us. We saw a 15% increase in the number of followers on Instagram, for example, over the six-week campaign period. So it was, there's a triple result that evolved from that. It also gave us the confidence that the investments we're making and the type of content that we're creating. The other thing that we spent a lot of time on last year from a campaign perspective was revitalising county liches. So there were two iterations of county liches last year, two again this year. It was certainly by the participating restaurateurs. We've received very good feedback on it. We've also been put forward as a finalist in the Ontario Tourism Awards of Excellence for the work the county has been doing with county liches. And then in 2023, in the fourth quarter, we also undertook a project that will come to fruition this year, in the revitalisation of the Taste Trail. The Taste Trail, as many of us know, has been a real statement. You see, Prince Edward County really pioneered the idea of food tourism back in 2008, when the Taste Trail was established. Now, in 2024, it's getting a new look, new energy, and giving us the inspiration to look at a little bit further, working with the Prince Edward County Arts Council, to also look at what we can do to revitalise the arts trail in 2024. So those are five kind of notable achievements that I'd want to just call out. But I think the most important thing about how we spend our money, where we spend our money, is the attributable results of the outcome of this activity. And I think it's important for us to remind ourselves that last year, we did see 87,000 remnites sold, which resulted in over $30 million in accommodation revenue here. That in turn resulted in $1.2 million in municipal County for discretionary purposes. And then 50% went to the two beneficiaries of the MAT tax, one being Visit the County, which took the lion's share. Stay PEC, which is also a approved. Overall, we had 326,000 unique visitors in the county. That's up 197% of the previous year. So, good attributable result. What I would also just want to call out is, and I do this with the utmost respect to, to the previous council that, that, that really pulled together the charter on Visit the County. We uphold the county's vis, the council's vision in working 100% to deliver the mandate for Visit the County. The work of Visit the County from a, from a early, early-stage perspective, from a board perspective, we look forward to 2024 with great anticipation. Much of the activity that we want to pursue in 2024 has been outlined to this council. Really, the big focus again is the collaboration with our community partners to ensure that we are ensuring that Visit the County remain one of the most, not just in Ontario, but in Canada. One of the other things that I am tabling today is the unaudited statement of account for 2020, for 2023. And I'm sorry, it's, perhaps you have it in your package? Okay. It is up on the, the screen here as well. But what I will simply do is kind of walk through some of the highlights of the year and where we ended up. We did have a carryover, a fairly significant carryover, a planned carryover from 2022. Remembering that it was a partial year for 2022, we budgeted very conservatively with an intention to do a, a carryover. What we also did with this carryover is, in consultation with both the county, as well as our KPMGR auditors, we put aside a operational reserve, a rainy day fund, if you will. So that is reflected here in the numbers, that's $85,000, which is approximately three months' operational reserve. So we started the year with a carryover of $241,000 in 2023. Visit the County's share of the MAT revenue was $548,000. Throughout the course of the year, we were able to generate partnership revenue, tune of about $22,000. And there was smaller amounts from events and seminars. And I want to return to these two points in, in a moment. But, so basically, for the year, we had a, we had $814,000 in revenue. When we look at the expenses, the lion's share of those expenses were in our, it's listed here as advertising, but essentially everything you saw on the pie chart. And then there's GNA expenses. And then the second big expense area, of course, is wages and benefits, that as I mentioned, were $250,000, $253,000. So if we look at expenses, we ended the year at 656,000, leaving a surplus So if we look at expenses, we ended the year at 656,000, leaving a surplus of 157,000, which will carry to 2024. Now, I want to return to the topic of wages. Clearly, what we want to do is want to continue to keep the ratio right between wages and discretionary spend. And so it's incumbent on Visit the County to look at ways that we can generate revenue beyond the MATT tax. The collaboration we're, we're doing with community partners is critically important because that will give us the opportunity to also do partnership programs, a source of revenue generation for us. Similarly, what we've been putting an emphasis on this year is looking for grants at the provincial and the federal. So that should also be another source of revenue. So we're keeping a watchful eye on the numbers, but thus far, over the last year and the outlook for 2024.
Thank you very much, Charlie. I'm going to ask the committee if they've got questions and comments, and Counselor Brainy's hand is up, and Counselor Roberts, Counselor Grosso, and Counselor Pennell. We'll try to keep in order.
Thank you, Chair McNamara. Charles, thanks for coming forward and I appreciate Mickey being here, too. I know your volunteer board members. I have to say, I'm a bit disappointed that your paid staff member, your executive director is in here to present these. So I do have some questions, I, I hope you can answer them. Your previous presenter, Mr. Ziggward, talked about metrics. That's pretty important to us because these are municipal tax dollars that are going into this. So first question I have, one of those has already been answered, so it's 254,000 on salaries. You say there's a full-time staff member and two consultants, correct? So there's...
Contractors.
Contractors, okay. The questions I have, the first one is, you, you talk in your report, the Ascent Council, there's 553 events in the previous year. Just a question I have is how many were created and sponsored by Visit the County?
Here to the counselor. I wouldn't be able to answer that accurately, guessing if I did today. I would say that we're probably looking at, from a scale perspective, I'd say a few dozen of those. What you see with the 453 events that are actually listed there, those are event listings that we carry on the website. So part of our mandate is to help propagate understanding of what's happening in the county. So that is actually, those are listings. Similarly, you'll see reference in the report to business listings. As well, we have, you know, some business listings on the website as well.
Okay. Next question I have, and I'll leave a comment to the end, I've, I've got two more. You say you've disturbed, while your, while your previous chair, when she reported a few weeks ago, said that print media is dead, it says here that you've distributed 29,000 pieces of print and rack cards delivered. How, how did that, how did that work? Trying to figure that out.
So I spoke of, of the importance of taking a multi-channel approach to reaching our target visitors. There are different ways that people consume media. Some people do it digitally, some do it on print, some do it through brochures, some do it through signboards. And, you know, Visit the County has long, and its predecessor organizations have been responsible for distributing print materials here in the county. And actually, not just here in the county, it's actually across Ontario. We've got a relationship with 10 businesses in the county that are literature kiosk distribution points. Those points, the individuals are actually trained as county ambassadors as well. We also have a relationship with the Ontario Travel Information Centers, you see it on the 401, nine of those, plus at Union Station in Toronto, where the literature is distributed, and it's Visit the County that administers that. So that's an important part of, of the mix.
And a final comment?
The last question I have, and then I'll, I'll reserve my comment after the other speakers. Thank you, Chair McNamara. So you've got 366,575 spent on online media. It says you've gained 5,441 followers. That equates to $67 per new follower. Would you say that that's good value?
So, so Counselor, with respect, it's actually, it's not just about, that is not, the definition of that is not just spend, hard-dollar spend on Meta, on Instagram or Facebook. That's really all of our digital activities, including the, the content creation that actually populates our social media sites. So it's not specifically, it's not, it's not specifically purchase of advertising. Organic content creation is a really, really important part of, of us, how we tell stories on social media. So it's not, it's not just, it's not just spend on advertising per se.
Thank you. Thank you, and Counselor Roberts?
Thank you. Charles, that was a good presentation and a, and a nice review of the, of the, of the presentation material, so I really appreciate, and the metrics are very, very impressive with regard to efficiency and effectiveness, that we may have a discussion, as Counselor Brainy pointed out. I'm doing another project, not related to this. And in that project, I came across a study done in 2020, I think it was, by Queen's, that looked at the importance of local media, robust local media, like we have in 99.3 County FM, or the Wellington Times, or the Picton Gazette. And the correlation was very strong between robust local media and the quality of political governance in the municipality. Plus, correlation was very strong between robust local media, as we have with 99.3 Times, Picton Gazette, with a sustainable social and economic well-being of that community. So to the extent that your job, or Visit the County's job, is to support and sustain a visitor economy, which is key to our overall well-sustained, sustainable well-being, both economically and socially, it strikes me as a bit of cognitive dissonance that you are so unsupportive of our local media in the form of 99.3 County FM, the Picton Gazette, and the Times. So I'd just like to understand that a little bit better. I mean, it's important, of course, to extend our online presence, but in the context of the importance of local media, local journalism, to both our political selves and our economic selves, the absence of Visit the County strikes me as odd.
To the chair. So I would take exception to the, the thought that there is no communication with the outlets that you have. I think that we work from a earned media perspective, with last year over 59 media outlets. I think that you may be referring to paid advertising, is that?
Yeah, I mean, excuse me, to clarify, yes, paid advertising, and that is the lifeblood of these, of these outlets. And these outlets are, at least from where I come from in the county, very popular with our visitors. So it's, it strikes me as strange.
Yeah, so I, I have a personal view on this, which I will express, and I think it's a, it's a pragmatic one. And that is, different media opportunities appropriate for different messaging. And when we think about the activities, and this part goes back to Counselor Brainy's question about events, when we have events where there is a benefit to community, both economic and just cultural well-being, to turn out the community that Visit the County is participating and supporting, I would agree with you that there is more than justification for using the local media on a paid basis, as well as an earned basis. So I think that that, so I don't think we disagree on that point. I don't know to qualify what you're suggesting, I don't, but if there's, if the content, if the activity, if the messaging is appropriate for the media, then I think that the media should be used.
Thank you. You're good. Counselor Grosso, your next, oh, did you want to do a quick follow-up? Or do you want to?
I just wanted to understand the rules, because Counselor Brainy asked a couple of questions. Do I ask one question, then ask a second question?
No, if you want to follow up, I think you should.
It's a different subject because I'm going to pursue this offline, so to speak.
Yeah, no, there's, I, I think, you know, please continue. We'll, we'll just try and, you know, get to everyone, and then we'll come back for a round, a second round if we need to.
On question number one from Roberts, we agree to disagree.
Well, no, I don't think we do disagree. Maybe it's the scale of, of, I, I would like to talk offline, I'd like to understand...
We'll do that, we'll do that, Charles. But I don't want to, I don't want to take up everybody's time.
Thank you.
Okay. So my, my second query, or puzzlement, is I've just seen an article, which karma is everything, I guess, it's in the Journal of Rural Studies, April 2024, so they're doing some time travel, which is always impressive. And it's specifically about Prince Edward County. And I'll just read you a quote. "The important role of non-traditional community actors, such as Visit the County, in advancing local economic development, building on local rural and, and asset-based community development. And when building the local economy, especially in rural communities, the importance to take an assets-first approach, leverage cross-sector partnerships, and experiment with innovative models to drive economic development." So when I translate those words, and they're talking about rural economies and, and economic development, that suggests to me, um, uh, doing more to actually invest in things like our, tangibly invest things like arts and culture, agritourism, the businesses that are truly hyper-local, very difficult to sustain, but are the foundations of our visitor economy. So not just, as you say, and you said correctly, not just driving demand, which is a relatively short-term perspective, it's my way of thinking, but also assuring that there is sustainable supply, which is a longer-term vision. So there you go, that's my second question.
We agree. We agree, we really do. I think that the product development, you know, you can encapsulate this into product development, is vitally important for any destination, but particularly more rural destinations, I think, because you've got, you've got not just place, but you also have space. So bringing, bringing attractions together, bringing points of interest together, it's very important that it be done in such a way that it's accessible to both community and visitor. So the work that we're doing specifically around the revitalization of the Taste Trail, I think would be a good example of investment in development, product development. I think that the, and it's, I don't want to, I don't want to preempt, but there will be more work in this area, particularly in the cultural space, in 2024, around the Arts Trail as well. One of the other notables I didn't call out, I should have, I mentioned it, is the work we were able to do with county museums last year. So from a heritage standpoint, I think that, you know, you've got disaggregated wonderful assets across this very broad area. The work that we can help do in kind of bringing together an awareness, regardless of where the individual assets are located, is very, very important, we take that very seriously. So I think product development absolutely is, it's not just marketing, but it is development.
Thank you very much. Compelling conversation going on. I'd like to now go to Counselor Grosso.
Hello, Charles. Couple of questions I have here. Well, more of a comment and then a question. So the work that we're doing for Visit the County, there, it's, it's not just the overnighters that the county is benefiting from, it's, it's all the day visitors. So the work that we're doing, we're bringing in day visitors, and they're spending money at the restaurants and crafts places and wherever else. So that's, you know, that's a big thing that doesn't really show up in the numbers in the back end, but it really helps, helps the local, a local economy. And then just another question, like, from what I hear, you know, from people that are visiting, is that the STAs, whether it's the Airbnbs or B and Bs or whatever, they could be expensive, you know? And the optimum spend is sometimes people are saying, oh, you know, I could have gone somewhere else at this point in time and spent, you know, some time in the States or down south. But do you think having more legal STAs would lower the cost of the overnight stays overall here in the county?
It's a very, very interesting question. And to answer that, one has to set aside all the reasons why there aren't more, right? Why, 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 courtesy assessing, council has decided to, to put from zoning perspective. But I think that, you know, certainly fundamental rules of supply and demand, if there's more supply, then typically that will translate into, to, to broader prices, not necessarily lower prices. Having said that, this is a very, very desirable destination. And if the quality of accommodation is as consistently high as what we're seeing today, then it wouldn't necessarily translate into lower prices. But what you, what you draw on is actually one of the pain points we do hear from visitors from time to time, and it becomes a little bit self-selecting on the profile of visitor that comes here. Fortunately, our physical location allows for the day trippers that you have mentioned, that's a very, very important component, albeit not contributing to the municipal accommodation tax. But it's also reflected, I think, in if you look at our top source markets for Prince Edward County, it is Ottawa, it is Montreal, it is Toronto. If there were broader accommodation, we may be able to attract from further away for longer periods of time. That certainly would be one of the potential upsides for doing so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Pennell.
I'm gonna go back to basically where Counselor Brainy had brought up about how we advertise. And at the presentation that was made to us, I asked the question, why are we banking everything on digital and not the old papers we can hand out? So I was basically told that's the way it goes now. But I did a little research on my own, I went around to some of the local municipalities, and there seems to be a little difference on opinions there. For instance, we in this county, when it comes to food, restaurants, being able to stay, there's a lot of young families that might come to the community, but if it is, it's only for a day trip. And I'm getting the idea that we are overpriced in a lot of areas, especially hospitality. And that is what we're banking on. So if we don't advertise locally, they're saying, they have people that'll maybe come because they can afford to stay in Coonawhat or Belleville, but they can't afford to stay in Prince Edward County. They want to be able to go to a local place and say, hey, here's something I can do in the county, it's, you know, half an hour from Belleville. And I still honestly believe if we are not prepared to cover both sides of the coin, these people that can't afford to come back here now, they're gonna get older, maybe not do as much travel. How do we encourage those people to come back? They're not coming back. If they find another spot, parship, that meets everything that they're looking for, like, I believe in some regards, the county is really moving ahead. In other regards, I think we've just about priced ourselves out of the mark. And if we don't smarten up as a group, businesses, council, everybody else, I don't think council or county will be so encouraging for people... I don't think council or county will be so encouraging for people to come in the future. Just my thoughts, but. And, oh, just one quick follow-up. Last year, I, I, for several years, run an outdoor market. And I think on most years, probably Toronto, Montreal area, probably run pretty well 50/50. But I believe last year, it was probably closer 60 Montreal, 40 Toronto. And I think Toronto's a little closer than that. I believe that's one big area your group is gonna have to look at.
Thank you, Counselor Pennell. First round, we still have Counselor Maynard.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your presentation. I'm.
John Hirsch.
I'm actually, gotcha, John. I'm, I'm quite impressed, right? Somebody that's been following this over the years, this is about as, as good as I could expect it to be and better in many, in many cases. And, I mean, you know, you've, you've really gone through your first year, so I will certainly not support, you know, like trying to, to micromanage what you're doing because those are your funds to do basically, you know, what you, what you wish with. But on the, on the talk about affordability of our, of our accommodations, has there been any conversation or thought how your group might be able to help attract those more traditional, more affordable roofed accommodations, chained, you know, chains, motels?
So we are looking to expand our community collaborations even beyond Prince Edward County. There are, the type of roofed accommodations that you are describing exist today in Quincy West, for example, in Belleville. You know, we, our, our first priority, of course, is to help our accommodators here in the county fill every night at the right rate, and that will always be our, our, our primary focus. But it is, there are opportunities. For example, with the airshow that's coming up at, at the base this summer, you know, there will be families from all over using accommodations all over. We want to really kind of collaborate with other destination marketing organizations in the region, Quincy West in particular, to be able to, to promote events where accommodations may be beyond just Prince Edward County. So I think, you know, that, that is, work with what we have is what, what we're kind of doing right now. Now, I don't know, would you also be, are you suggesting as well, Visit the County working more development promotion standpoint to bring in roofed accommodation?
I'm just, just asking. I don't know where it goes, but I mean, you know, that's.
We are always here as an information source for development inquiries in terms of what is it about the county that could be successful for a roofed accommodation? That's a role that we could certainly play.
Yeah, because they certainly would contribute to the, to the MAT tax, if I could.
Yes, you may.
So speaking just recently, not even in preparation to this, to somebody that's had a, an STA, whole home STA for, for quite some time. And they have seen actually kind of a little bit of a decrease in the, you know, over the, over the peak, certainly, when, and they are, they will be this year lowering the, the cost of their accommodations. I mean, you know, it's beautiful, it's waterfront stuff, but, you know, they would rather have those extra days than, than go empty. So I think that you will see the market, is that what you find? That you will see the market kind of correct itself?
I think that what we saw in 2022 into, well, from the second half of 2021 through 2022 is quite extraordinary, really quite extraordinary. What we saw throughout 2023 is what we would call return of the new normal from a demand perspective. The fourth quarter and the second quarter were lighter than we would like to see. And I think we have, we have more work to do in those areas. But I think that certainly if you look at Q3, which was about 16 million in accommodation revenue last year, I think is really, that's the benchmark that we. So what does that mean to an STA owner? It means that they've got to make a determination from a pricing standpoint, how they want to so-called revenue manage their, their property. Are they lightening up on price to get occupancy? Are they sticking to yield and maybe sacrificing some occupancy? That's a decision that every accommodation provider really has to make. We've tried to aid the discussions in that and running a workshop with, with, at the STA Association members, talking about pricing. And that's something that we will try to continue to stimulate educationally.
Thank you. So who knew there was so much interest? And this is, it's a very interesting topic. It's close to many of the hearts of the table, residents and the industry alike. We're gonna sort of try to move a little bit faster, but we still have several people who wish to ask questions. So next, I'm gonna go to Counselor Hirsch, and I would apologize to him because I forgot him last, when he put his hand up the first time. Thank you, Counselor Hirsch.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and no problem. And thank you, Charlie, for the, the presentation and all of this information from VTC. Good to hear from you again. I can't see you the way the cameras work, but great to hear from you. I'm gonna ask the question that I think ends up, at the end of the day, being possibly the most important, and that is ultimately, the bottom line is, what is, and I think Counselor Pennell said, said this earlier on, talking about the, the previous presenter, you know, what is the bang for the buck? So my question for you now is, and you presented some statistics about, you know, number of nights and so on. But are you, is VTC yet in a position to be able to calculate what, what bang is being achieved for the buck? I know you could talk about, you know, Facebook views and likes and.
Sorry, Counselor Hirsch, we've lost you a little bit. Counselor Hirsch, hang on for a second if you can hear us. There you go. You're back. Thank you. Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm getting the unstable internet.
Got it.
Anyway, just, just wondering if you can, can say at this point, whether you're able to calculate a bang for the buck or is that a, a sort of a developing proposition?
I would say that we can, we can calculate a, a number of the really important building blocks for it. So from, on a campaign basis, we can look at a campaign and say, this is how much we spent, and this is the attributable revenue that was derived from it. It's, it's easy when you have, when you can actually, for example, if you look at earned media, so PR work, you know what the, know how much you've expended to actually get a story in a publication. You know what the rate card is for that publication. You can actually, you can calculate really what is the value that you've received. So there are ways within specific campaigns. But I think, Counselor, what, what you're saying is, from an overall outcome measure perspective, right? Are we able to take the entirety of our spend and say, this gave the county a 12 to 1 return? We're not quite there yet, but that certainly is the work that we're trying to do. And that's why it's so important that the activities we undertake be measurable activities. I think this year is gonna be the year when we can pull this together.
Early days still. Thank you very much. Do you have a follow-up quickly, Counselor Hirsch?
Yeah, just quickly. Thanks, Charlie. I, I think that's kind of ultimately the goal that, that council would want to see is, is, can we do that measurement? And I think the public's gonna want to see that too, because the public is quite aware that, you know, there's a lot of money in the MAT tax. And we tell them what we're doing as a council with our half, fixing roads, et cetera. And I think they want to be able to see in a clear sense what, what's happening with the other half. So, so thanks for that. I think we're on the right track.
Thank you very much, Counselor Hirsch. Sorry, we're just gonna keep it moving a little bit. Mayor Ferguson, you're next in line. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thanks, Charlie, for the presentation. I guess you're hearing a lot about, about pricing and the perception that Prince Edward County is. I won't say pricing itself out of the market, but perceived as being expensive. And certainly as of throughout 2023, the commentary from our businesses on a regular basis was down 30% across the board. This is a matter of, of obviously concern, but also that, you know, that, that reduction has to be tempered by the fact that the world was, was open and people were traveling just about everywhere. Regardless, we, we still have to be mindful of that statistic and how we, we, you know, market the municipality so that we engage as many people as possible. Earlier in your presentation, if I heard correctly, you mentioned the number of visitors to Prince Edward County?
Number of unique, unique visitors. 397,000 unique visitors.
Unique visitors, not, not total numbers?
No.
Okay, does that include people to, coming into the park?
That does include the people coming into the park. The way that data is gathered is through what's called geofencing of, so it is, it's anyone who enters more than 40 kilometers from.
Okay. So when, when you refer to them as unique visitors, those are first time?
Correct.
Do you have any statistics about what the overall visitors' number was for last year?
Yeah, I do. It's, let's just pull it up here. Unique, I'm sorry, I said 396, 326, unique visitors. Total visits across the year were 2.4 million.
2.4 million, okay.
So you have a, you have a repeat visit, very high repeat, which is not surprising given our location.
Right, okay. And any idea how many of those visitors contributed to the MAT? I could probably.
Turn to the math.
Do a lot of math, but I'm not a math guy.
Well, I think that certainly, you know, I think that the unique visitors is gonna be really the sweet spot for MAT contribution. Repeat visitors, less so, right? Because repeat visitors, that's a more regional travel, so that would suggest perhaps it's more day trip. Still the set of the.
I mean, if you don't have the, if you don't have the number, you can follow up.
Yeah, that's, I think that some of that information is in your report, is in your annual report as well.
Yeah, I just didn't spot it.
Yeah, because it's lengthy. There's a lot there.
Yeah.
So I think that's the end of round one. I'm, I'm, just would like to add my comments very, very briefly. You've been having to stand up there a very long time. It's been a really good conversation. I, I'm just interested in a couple of points that were touched on. When the last council sort of worked on this to, to move forward with a DMO, one of the principles was that principle of management, managing visits. And staff at that time were talking about, you know, planning your visit, advertising. I, I just wanted to, with respect to your independence as board, just, it's always in mind for me, the sort of risk of jumping the shark and oversaturating our existing communities and our existing facilities and our existing tourism infrastructure to ensure that it's well-balanced, that it's meeting the, the demands of tourism businesses, but also local residences. And not necessarily focusing on volume, but focusing on ensuring that healthy balance and investing in those principles that, that staff have created some, some excellent work in in regenerative tourism and moving in that direction. So just, just that comment. Thank you very much, and thank you for the, you know, very clearly congenial collaborative and inaugural methodology for your first year. And also the reminder to check the privacy settings on my cellphone because, or leave my phone behind when I go on holiday, because that's creepy. Thank you. So we'll move on to, oh no, we've still got one in round, we've got a member of round one. Thank you, Counselor St. Jean. I thought we could get to round two, but no, go for it.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, there's certainly been a lot of information to try and absorb. And a number of the questions that I had were already asked, so. But first of all, thank you very much, Charlie, for, for presenting this. And, and I think all of us recognize this is a first full year of Visit the County. You're still getting your legs. You know, I, I get it. And I think you have achieved a lot in a very short period of time. Some of the things that, so I thank you for the, all that hard work. Couple of things that, that I guess some members of the public have mentioned to me. There's always that ongoing question of, you know, where are you spending the money? And is money being spent on, I'll call it in-season, marketing and promotion and advertising? So my question is, how much effort currently and how much future effort are you putting into? You know, we've been saying it for 20 years, building the shoulder seasons, the off-season. Because I, I think the new board, the board members, when they were first established, were, were probably told, don't spend any money on what we already know is working and have.
Yep.
Let, because we, I, I think we truly want to see a year-round tourism economy here so that it's more balanced as opposed to the massive spike for three months and then nothing for three to four months in the middle of the season. So can you, can you kind of help me to understand what you're doing?
Yes.
To build the rest of the year?
Very quickly, thank you, Charlie.
Okay. So firstly, I'll just say this, and it's, it's part of our vision to make this a year-round destination. So we're very, very conscious of that. And the, the marketing committee at VTC and the staff are laser-focused on what can we do outside of that. So a lot of the event sponsorships that we are doing, whether it's through promotional support are outside of the summer. So Maple Madness, County Licious is purposely put in the fourth quarter and in the. But I think as we build organizational capacity, you'll just see more and more of that type of activity. But it is very much, the focus is on how do we build demand outside of the peak?
Thank you.
Okay, that's, yeah, and I, and I think that's what everybody wants to, to hear. And, and I expect that your next presentation next year, the next annual report, will, will likely lean into that a little bit more. And, and quite honestly, I think you'll have, you'll have proof of that. Whereas right now, I'm assuming you're, you're building to that. So the, the statistics aren't there yet to, to definitively say what you're doing. And it takes a while. Marketing and advertising is a slow, forward, progressive game. You do not, you never see instantaneous gratification. So I think everybody needs to remind themselves of that. And also, I'd like to say, I think everybody's a marketer or an advertiser, and everybody has their own opinions. But for my part, I'd rather trust in the professionals who are in that business. And mind you, hold their feet to the fire when I don't agree with what they're doing. But in the end, overall, I, I'm satisfied with what you're doing. But be aware, there will be more questions in the future.
Thank you very much. I, just if I may, Chair, I, I would like to say that as a, as a chief marketing officer for Canada's largest airline and hotel companies, et cetera, I've had the pleasure of working with a number of marketing talent throughout my business. And I have to say that bar none, we have some of those. So I think that if we can have one takeaway, I do hope.
Thank you. So we've got a couple of people already looking for round two. We're gonna go pretty quickly, starting with Counselor Brainy and then Counselor Roberts.
Thank you, Chair McNaughton. Just the last question Charles is gonna ask. It, there's a number of organizations in the county that are providing a tourism benefit but aren't receiving any MAT tax dollars. I, I think you can understand that scenario, but. but are, is your organization, is Visit the County looking for alternate forms of funding, just not from, to, okay, good.
Yeah, my, to my earlier point, uh, really two primary areas, one is the partnership work that we can do with others, uh, and then two is grant monies, and then really what we would like to do is, uh, you know, we're gonna continue to partner, you saw the, you saw the sixty community organizations up there, we are going to continue to bring our resources forward, align the objectives, and try to float all boats as a work.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Roberts.
Not Charles, but Charlie now. Charlie, you referenced, uh, uh, sports tourism, and I, I just, you know, you say that word, sports, and all of a sudden I think of the Wellington Dukes, and, uh, um, you know, very close to my heart, um, uh, and we know that junior hockey, especially in rural municipalities, struggles, I mean, it's, it's hard to pay the bills, you know, the rink rental, the billoting, the travel costs, the equipment, it's a, you know, it's, it's not Toronto, um, and my, and this, I should preface this by saying, I only want a clarification, that's all I want, I'm not, there's no judgment involved in this question, but my understanding was when I heard that Visit the County was going to make a twelve-thousand-dollar contribution to the Dukes, I thought it would be a twelve-thousand-dollar contribution that would assist in some of those practical costs of maintaining the team, uh, in our community, which is a heritage phenomenon for us, I mean, it's a, it's, we're, we're quite partisan around the Wellington Dukes, but my understanding was that somehow that ended up being, uh, uh, I guess I saw the banner at the, uh, at the rink, that ended up being a advertising sponsorship and, and, and the banner, but not, you know, practical cash to, to buy those hockey sticks and stuff. Am I wrong, or what went on there?
I, I don't know the details of those negotiations, that would have been a staff discussion, uh, certainly something we can, I can look into and, and circle back with you. My understanding at the time was actually it was about a bus wrap, it was about actually wrapping the bus, uh, so, that, but that may just be a new data point that's incorrect, and I, I would have to look into.
I'd just like to know the facts, that's all, thank you.
Thank you. So, uh, so we can have one last quick comment, thank you, Counselor Pennell, and then I think we really do need to move on, time is, time is ticking.
One of the biggest things going on the next couple of weeks anyway, in the county, is the Maple in the County.
Yes.
It draws people from all over this province in Quebec. Are you part of that at all?
We are, we are, we're promoting it very, very heavily, we have a whole section on the website that is dedicated to that, and then a lot of our social media outreach is around, stories around Maple.
And I'll be looking forward to, to see any report if money is going to any hockey teams.
Thank you very much, uh, on that last note, and a nice reminder that it's Maple in the County, um, thank you very much, Charlie, you've been in the hot seat for a very long time, thank you for your tolerance and patience, that was a very good conversation.
Thank you.
Thanks for your, uh, uh, joining us. Can I get a couple of people to put, uh, to put this, receiving the presentation on the floor, Counselor Roberts and Counselor St. Jean, thank you very much, sorry, Counselor Grosso, you missed your moment. No, if you could read that, thank you.
This is a Roberts-St. Jean motion, that the presentation by Charles McKee of Visit the County regarding the Visit the County 2023 Annual Report be received.
All in favor? Thank you, that carries. We're gonna move on to the item, uh, sorry, there, I don't think there are comments from the audience, but if there's anyone in the room who would like to make a comment, this is your moment, you can make a comment on anything related to any item on the agenda. Thank you very much, no comments from the audience, we'll move on to items for consideration, item seven point one, uh, the report from the Community Services Programs and Initiatives, can I get somebody to put that on the floor, please? Can I get, thank you, Counselor St. Jean and Counselor Maynard.
Thank you, Madam Chair, it's a St. Jean Maynard motion, the council report, uh, receive report CSP zero-one-two-zero-twenty-four, that council approve the twenty-two-four Tourism Management Work Plan and Budget attached to this report, and that council amend Schedule N of the Fees and Charges Bylaw one-six-eight-two-two-three, twenty-two-three, as amended to eliminate the admission fee at Wellington Rotary Beach.
Thank you, and we've got, um, a staff member, Julian Snaps, joining us for questions. Are, are you looking to make a brief present, presentation, or are you, or are you just here to receive questions and comments?
I could do a brief overview of, of the report in the package before we start.
That would be great, thank you.
And through the chair to, uh, to members of council. So the Tourism Management Plan is an annual plan for ensuring that the municipality is contributing to a sense of readiness for the summer season. Uh, it's a cross-departmental plan that involves multiple teams within the municipality, it's led by the department that I represent, CSP, um, but it really is a whole county program, and there are colleagues, um, from other teams in, in the municipality in the room, um, should there be questions about their service areas, that I can't answer, if, if needed, they're here to, uh, to speak to it as well. So Tourism Management Planning has evolved a lot over the years, it started as a response to a crisis and the challenges of over-tourism that we were experiencing in the COVID-nineteen pandemic, um, but it's now a lot less about managing people and behaviors, and more about communication, collaboration, and making small investments in, uh, in things that improve our readiness for the summer season. So the twenty-two-four Tourism Management Plan, uh, it focuses a lot on communication internally and externally, uh, to ensure that, um, our community is ready for the summer season. When it comes to spending the Tourism Management Plan budget, um, we've tried to focus on, spending the, a portion of the municipality's share of the MAT on things that, um, that hit that sweet spot in the Venn diagram that we've heard about, uh, a few times today, where there's that overlap between resident needs and wants, and the needs and wants of, um, visitors in our community as well as tourism-related businesses, um, so, uh, you'll see that in the work plan and the budget, and we're really focusing on things that are within municipal control, um, what the municipality can do to improve our services and amenities, um, to ensure a successful summer. So there's four different documents in the package, um, on the agenda, there's the staff report that gives a general overview of what Tourism Management Planning is, um, and how we go about it, um, there's more detail included in the work plan and budget that lists all the specific actions that staff are proposing, uh, for this year's plan, um, why they are included, what the financial implications would be, if any, which team is responsible for that implementation, and an attempt to start to forecast how this service area may show up in future years, so starting to take a little bit of a longer term look at some of these service, um, areas. There's also a consultation backgrounder that describes who we talked to, what we learned, and how they influenced our, the recommendations in the plan, and finally, there's the draft amended, amendment for the fees and charges by law, so that's all in your agenda package. Just as a, a reminder, the overall budget for the TMP was set during the operating budget deliberation, so there's a, uh, one hundred, one hundred, one hundred and nineteen thousand seven fifty in the operating budget, and this report proposes how that would be spent. In terms of highlights of the plan, we're excited to include accessibility as a service area that's being considered in the Tourism Management Plan, we're also excited to, uh, bring the Millennium Trail into the Tourism Management Plan scope, it's not been part of what we've, um, considered in previous years. Some other highlights, we are, uh, recommending eliminating the admission fee at Wellington Rotary Beach, and instead, um, using the MAT to create a seasonal beach steward position who can proactively manage and care for the beach, um, rather than, uh, making staffing at that location exclusively about charging admission. Uh, but with this, uh, change, the PEC Summer Pass Program would now be exclusively about access to Baker Road and Hikes Point and parking in those areas, uh, and staff are proposing no changes to the management of those areas, including, um, keeping five-hundred meters of roadside parking available for non-residents on Baker Road. Just to note that, it's noted in the report, but staff are not ready to make recommendations about the Taxi Business Support Grant at this time, we did a lot of really good groundwork on this program, uh, we talked to, to taxi operators, we talked to another jurisdiction who ran a similar program, uh, we talked internally, uh, finance, legal, and risk management, um, and there's a little bit of complexity that's been introduced to that project, so we're committed to coming back to council with a report specifically about that at the earliest opportunity, and we'll hold the forty thousand, uh, within the TMP budget for that until we can, um, flush that out fully for you.
Thank you very much, uh, now we're gonna start with Counselor Nyman.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, that's all, there's a, probably three questions are short, so you touched on the taxi support program, and I, I understand the answer to say, you'll get back to us at your earliest convenience, when is that?
Uh, we, we believe that we could come back in, in April, perhaps, uh, an, an agenda in April.
Early April or late?
Through the chair to the counselor, I, I don't, I don't know if I can commit to early or late, I don't know what's on the agendas coming up, we're very close, as I said, we just have to work through a couple of logistical things, um, to make sure that, all of our i's are dotted and t's are crossed.
Okay, thank you. So the next two here is, uh, so the boat launches, um, so if, um, I'm living here, but I want to take my grandkids off the dock to fish, I have to pay ten dollars to park for probably ten to fifteen minutes, because that's how long it's gonna last.
Your attention span, right?
So, I'm, I'm just wondering, is there a provision that we could put in there that, you know, somebody that wanted to take their, uh, kids fishing or grandkids fishing, that they could, um, you know, they don't have to pay, you know what I mean?
Yeah, through the chair to the counselor, um, you're correct, that is the way that the program is set up, but the, at this time, anybody parking, um, at those boat launches between May and October, needs to have a valid parking pass, permit, um, which would be ten dollars for an un-trailored vehicle for the day. There, as mentioned in the report, there is a, um, there is a, an overdue, uh, review of the entire boat launch program that needs to come to council, and we anticipate that that would be done by the end of this calendar year, so we can take a look at the boat launch system, uh, holistically and, and make amendments to it, um, but we haven't, we haven't contemplated anything like what you're suggesting, um, should you wish to introduce a motion, we'd respond to it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you want to hang on to that?
Sure.
And do you want to finish that last quick, third piece?
Yeah.
Very quickly.
I'll come back to that.
At the same time?
Yeah, but then the last question is, the beach employee, um, I, I'm just wondering, as I read in the report, it's gonna be for picking up garbage or, um, anything like that, or emptying garbage cans, but is it my understanding that we have employees working on weekends that do that now, and why can they not pop in there once or twice a day to, uh, you know, empty the garbage cans, and I think part of the problem was, the garbage cans were over, uh, overflowing, and, you know, and I think because they weren't emptied all weekend, but we have employees, I believe, that work empty garbage, or collect garbage over the weekend, so can we not use them?
Okay, so the question is whether there's not existing capacity to just take a little bit better care of the beach with the staff we have?
Yeah, use the staff that we have instead of hiring new staff.
Thank you, so, think, go ahead.
Through to Chair, to Counselor Nyman, uh, we do have, uh, two staff members that have, uh, we have an A and B, uh, garbage pickup throughout the county, i- it's, uh, quite extensive and to throw extra onto them, we go to Wellington first thing in the morning and pick up all the trash that the staff collected, but to guarantee that I can hit there two to three times a day on a weekend, I, I can't guarantee that, and with the, uh, with, with this staff member, uh, that we're asking for instead of the, uh, gates, they would be going through, cleaning up, and if there's any issues with, uh, um, a lot of people coming in, they will make a phone call and ask for help and have everything set up, so it's, it's a multiple role, uh, personnel be at the beach.
Very quickly, yeah, no, stay on the topic.
So, I understand what you're saying.
Okay, hold that thought, if there's a motion coming, we'll come back to you at the end. Okay, thank you, so we've got Counselor Pennell next.
Yeah, a couple of things I wanted to ask about, one being, if someone's using a kayak, you park your car, usually have it on the roof, walk it down, they've gotta pay a fee for parking, you park your boat there, you gotta pay fee for parking, if you go and read a book and sit in the parking lot, you can sit there all day, and nobody asks you why, and I can see if somebody has taken a kayak or canoe, you haven't got a boat trailer, you're not taking two parking spots, is there anything that they can do differently, be able to do that?
Through the chair to Counselor Pennell, um, you're correct, the way that it is set up, uh, anybody parking in the parking lots at the boat launch need to, to pay to park, that's the way it's currently set up, um, I suppose if somebody sat in their car, uh, for the day, then, uh, if a bylaw officer came by and knocked on their window, they could move, um, and get away with it for free, but any use of those spaces requires a, a parking fee, uh, that's how we've set it up, and as I said to Counselor Nyman, it's not been contemplated otherwise, but we would respond to a motion if you wanted to.
And the follow-up question, in particular, at the Wellington Beach, uh, is that still gonna be controlled by somebody there? Because I was in last summer, and, uh, I think if they could have double-decked the cars, they would have, there was, the whole place, I think I counted a hundred and sixty-four vehicles in there, how many vehicles is the whole, and that was one that was under control of the county, there's staff there.
Through the chair to the counselor, we're talking about vehicles parked at Wellington Beach in the, um, the boat launch area, or throughout the whole?
In every area.
Yeah.
There wasn't a spot, they weren't, nobody could get near a boat launch, they were parked everywhere, that was a Sunday afternoon.
Uh, through the chair to the counselor, it is a very popular spot, um, and yeah, and to, um, to my colleague's point, having the beach steward on-site to monitor that space, um, and allowing the staff who are on-site at the beach to do things other than collecting admission revenue, would allow us to be able to monitor that, uh, call in bylaw if the parking is, uh, getting out of control, people are parking where they shouldn't be, um, to be able to monitor numbers and report back to us about where those congestions are, I think there's also some work that staff are planning to do to improve signage in that location, because the signage around that boat launch is quite confusing.
I'm, I'm just looking.
Sorry, just because we've got a bit of a lineup happening now, um, but
I'll come back.
Yeah, yeah, we can, we can come back, I think it's also, um, sort of gonna be touched on a little bit already, uh, sorry, I've got, uh, Counselor Maynard next, and then I've got Mayor Ferguson right after that.
Thank you, thank you for, for the report, I'm, I'm really impressed that this is good, that we've got a pot of money that will go towards, you know, the management part, and still allow us to keep a good part of our, uh, of our MAT tax for that infrastructure part, um, I like the changes in the, uh, the Summer Pass, excellent, and the, um, little more flexibility, uh, for the parking at the dynamic beaches, thank you, um, maybe in the future, or sometime, I'd also like to, to see if there's consideration to reopening some of the parking, that's not necessarily roadside, at the, uh, the less visited areas on the, uh, on the western, on the western shore, i.e. Stinson Block, you know, places that really didn't see that much, uh, use last year, and have historically been able to at least, you know, a few people could, could go down, um, the Millennium Trail work good, um, and I, I'm looking forward to, I hope, to that. The Millennium Trail work good, um, and I, I'm looking forward to, uh, I hope, uh, to that, uh, study on the, uh, on the boat launches. And, uh, I'm, I'm happiest about having a depot in the west to, to support washroom and, and park services in the, in the north and the west of the, uh, of the county. And I'll just ask if maybe in the case of an emergency, if that staff member at the Wellington, at the Wellington Beach might be mobile enough to, uh, you know, to move temporarily if there was, um, if there was a, uh, park emergency in, uh, in another area? Or something to consider? I don't know, Jeff, is that something that maybe might happen?
Uh, through your chair to Counselor Maynard, anything's possible. So, uh, this is, uh, new for us to switch in the way we're doing things. So we're looking for newer, better ideas to help the municipality of itself.
Yeah, I think you probably know which incident I might be talking about when there was, you know, like every once in a while, it, it doesn't happen often, but to have somebody in, at least in that northwest, uh, region and to have less, um, traveling back and forth to get washroom supplies and cleaning, thank you.
Thank you, uh, we're gonna move, we're gonna move on to Mayor Ferguson now.
Thank you, Madam Chair, um, terrific report and recommendations are, are spot on. We, we did what we had to do to react to a crisis and was always the intention to gradually wind it down as we moved out and, and doing a great job to do this. Question about the boat launches, which seems to be on, um, uh, other counselors' minds as well. Has any thought been given to adding, uh, parking there to the seasonal pass? So if you've got the pass, you can park at the boat launch. I think that would be, and I, I look at that, the, the pass as an opportunity to add amenities for our residents. Not specifically related just to summer, but throughout the season. But I'll ask specifically about the boat launches.
Uh, through the chair to Mayor Ferguson, um, uh, in order to do, it is possible, sure, it is possible. I think one of the things that we'd want to take a look at is, um, the revenue that's generated from residents who are purchasing passes for the boat launches, um, is significant and it's been structured as a, as a user pay system because not every resident of Prince Edward County has access to a boat, um, a kayak, uh, and, and uses the boat launches. So that's a way for the users of, um, that amenity to provide support for those amenities existing. Um, so staff haven't contemplated it. Uh, of course, if it's, uh, the will of council to, to look into it, we could definitely look into it and, and share the advantages and disadvantages of using the pass in that way. Um, I don't have the financial numbers in front of me, so I can't answer that question right now. Um, but of course, there is, uh, there is a full review of the boat launch system that needs to come and look at it holistically, yeah.
If we could turn it to the CAO for comment, thank you.
Yes, thank you Chair, I would just, uh, really ask council, um, we had some staff changes in our operational department. That report did not get completed, the review is quite extensive. There is a very long list of work that this council has spoken to in other meetings that needs to happen at boat launches. And so, um, eliminating revenue, uh, without a program that we have actually done the analysis on is not what is recommended here. So I would, I just would really ask, it's, it's not fair to Julianne to answer questions about a program that she's not responsible for and we haven't done the work. So if we could park those conversations and, um, we will endeavor to get that back, um, before the end of the year.
Thank you very much for that, uh, for that context, that's very helpful. Um, Mayor Ferguson, are you comfortable for now? And we'll come back to it when we have more information. Uh, Counselor Ingelsdorfer, you're next.
Uh, thank you, um, yeah, I just wanted to say, I think that the, the changes at the beach, that's exactly what I was hoping for, was, uh, to, to remove the fee and then I think that the steward would, is, just so everybody knows, I'm getting calls, I would say every other day of people driving down along the beach, driving their vehicles on the beachfront. So it's more than just garbage at the beach, I think it's, uh, you know, somebody just to, to help people that are there. And, you know, the Rotary Club of Wellington, I think the past few years, they've, they've, they haven't been as involved with the beach just because of how it's been managed, but they're, they're slowly coming back and they're, and they're, they're excited about getting back involved in that space. So I think the steward too can help, uh, get them back involved in the beach and probably help, uh, maintain it a little better as well too, so.
Thank you for sharing that, uh, we've got Counselor St. Jean next.
Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you Julianne for this, uh, I'll call it a very concise report. Um, you know, having, having experienced the tourism, a previous tourism management plan, which was more of a tourism reactionary plan, uh, and, and seeing this scaled down and better managing what's actually occurring now, I think that, I think this is amazing. I, I think we're headed in the right direction. I, 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 there's many things that I like about this, you know, the, the, uh, with regards to service area and the parks, talking about beautification, I think that's, that's great. Uh, as you know, the, in Benson Park, the, the BIA sponsored, uh, a lot of the, the artwork that occurred there on park benches, on the fencing, that kind of thing. And I, and I think that's a program that can be easily expanded to the rest of the community in all of our parks. And I think it's great, it's beautiful, it, it encourages our local artists to participate, our students to participate. And, and I think that's some, I, I hundred percent support that kind of a program as well as the, um, Counselor Maynard's comment about the CCAN containing all of the amenities to save staff running hundreds of extra miles every year. Uh, I think, I think that's great. Uh, the, uh, with regards to, uh, the, the beach steward or beach patrol person, I'm assuming that that is, uh, likely to be a summer student, not a full-time unionized employee because we, I'm assuming that because we really don't need it in December, do we?
Through you, Counselor, yes, it's gonna be a student or a contract employee, it's not gonna be a full-time employee, no, it's only a couple of months, so.
Yeah, so the cost is minimal, yeah, so okay.
Thank you, thank, yeah, for sure.
As I'm on my roll with this.
Oh, yes, you may, sorry.
Cause I have more compliments. Uh, with, with regards to the, uh, the Millennium Trail, we all know how important it is to, to keep the invasive species and, and certainly noxious weeds that are dangerous to human health under control. I, I think that's an amazing, I think that's really good that we're, we're focusing on that. And I particularly like the idea that, that, that some of the MAT money is going towards Millennium Trail. It isn't just for residents, it in fact is, as you state in there, uh, it's, it's a draw to tourism. So if we can create more of a link that way, then that is less, uh, resident rate payer funded and more tourism funded. So I, I'm hoping you'll expand on that. Uh, and, and maybe there are other things we can expand MAT use on that, that, uh, is not just solely for our use as residents, but is also being used by tourists. The more, if we have more tourism, uh, more of our amenities being used, then I think there needs to be a better cost sharing, whether it's MAT versus our, uh, tax levy. So overall, I just want to say thank you for this, I think this is a great report. I really look forward to the parking, uh, report because as Counselor, um, Nyman stated, you take your kids there for 20 minutes and you get a ticket. Uh, and then to me, I see that as a benefit to residents. If we can figure out a way to make that a little more beneficial, I'm not hauling my boat, but I'm stopping in there and I happen to walk away from my vehicle and bylaw shows up and I get ticketed, I'm not gonna be very happy. So I can respect why people are asking those questions. So I, I truly hope you can incorporate that somehow, whether it's our yellow tag or whatever.
Thank you.
So thank you very much Julianne for all your hard work.
Thank you Counselor St. Jean, Counselor Brainy.
Thank you Chair McNaut, and I, I'm completely, uh, concur with, uh, with Counselor Ingelsdorfer and, uh, and St. Jean have said. I, I think this is, is a huge improvement, I think you've, you've listened to what residents have had to say, what counselors had to say. I know Counselor Ingelsdorfer's been living this the last couple of years, so, uh, for him to be happy with these, uh, I, I am too. And I also got a nice tip from Counselor Pennell, know to bring a book, so I won't get ticketed, I can just read now. It's always good, it's always good to get those tips, so, but anyways, I, I, I appreciate the efforts with this. I think it's, uh, there's always work in progress, but this is, this is a, a huge step forward, so thank you.
Oh, uh, okay, we're continuing on, round one, uh, Counselor Harrison.
This is more of a comment than a question and I, I'll refer specifically to the boat launch at Preneers Cove. And, uh, this sort of ties into our earlier presenter in the expansion of stroller season. And there's, we all know there's a, a lot of, uh, out-of-town fishermen come to fish for walleye late in the fall, uh, down the reach. And our, uh, boat launch closes and needs some work far, far too early. And, uh, this launch should actually be open probably till about Christmas time. Because what's happening, particularly, uh, a couple of Americans I talked to that would come and stay at the county, in the county here, if they had a spot to launch, instead they're going to the, uh, bath area because their launch, they keep open year, basically year-round unless ice prohibits it. But there is a particularly a period of time there when, uh, in Picton here, they can't launch because of ice. And yet the fishermen keep coming from that other area, uh, because they can launch down there. And, uh, I think this is something we should, uh, you know, take a hard look at, keeping the launch open later, maintaining it, and I think it contributes to both local people and tourism and is a draw in that stroller seizing, we're trying so hard to get tourists in.
We've heard that we're gonna be, um, hearing more from an oper, from the operations team on boat launches. Is that a motion that you want to make? Or is that something that you're content to express to staff?
No, it's a comment that can be, can be worked into that, it's my two cents worth.
Yeah, two cents.
Thank you.
Two cents for you. Uh, thanks very much. So, uh, are there any further comments in this first round? I think just about everyone's been covered. Um, I, I just have a couple of brief comments to add. So I just for, you know, I just want to make a couple of general comments about the process in general over these past few years and the evolution of, uh, our, uh, corporate capacity that I'm very impressed with the collaboration between departments, even with, you know, um, one department that's still waiting for some, uh, staff, new staff members to settle in. Um, the, the, what we see from year to year is an impressive response to, uh, work across departments, to be listening to the public, to be responding to needs as they change and to learn the lessons as you move along. And I'm very impressed, um, and have been consistently impressed with this as, as a, you know, progressive, um, progressive and, uh, um, uh, plan that is able to pivot, pivot effectively quickly and with, uh, the most, um, current data that it, that you can access. So congratulations to, to the, um, staff on the sort of progress and cultural, um, extraordinary cultural motion that's going on in that regard. Uh, I also, um, I also really love the, that accessibility has been made central to this process. And I think, I, I can't speak for the entire accessibility committee, um, but I believe the accessibility committee, who, I, I mean, it's listed in next steps that you'll be consulting the committee, so thank you for that. But I also think just seeing accessibility have a spotlight in the report is something that will be meaningful to that, uh, to that committee and to members of our community. So, uh, thank you also for that. And I have one specific, uh, comment about the benches, which the beautification program, great, very excited. Uh, just from an accessibility standpoint, the benches that are scheduled for replacement prior to beautification, um, uh, from an accessible, an accessibility standpoint, um, I, I, uh, and you can, you know, ask the committee specifically if you prefer, but, uh, just a note that those benches should be accessible benches and not have any barriers within them that would prevent people with, who require mobility aids, people who might be larger, people who might have, um, who, or who might be, you know, wrangling small children so that everybody can use those benches. That's just a comment, thank you. Oh, Director Lindsay.
I love that name Georgia, but Lisa's good.
Sorry?
Oh, I thought you said Georgia Lindsay, I was like, wow, I love that name.
Oh, no, but you know, if you want that, you know, no, director, just trying to give you.
My apologies.
No, that's fine.
Uh, through the chair, just to comment on, um, the benches and accessibility. The recreation team, um, at every instance when replacements are being made, accessibility is certainly being implemented. There are times when there are fixed, uh, units in place that are, uh, cemented into the ground where the level of accessibility is challenging, um, without having to, you know, dig deep into having to take out a large foundation. But it is certainly a part of the plan in every instance.
Understandable, if there are physical barriers to actually implementing, um, you know, that, that can't be dealt with at this time, that, that's acceptable. It's just thinking about the design of the benches themselves, so we don't see any with erected barriers within the bench construction itself.
And also access to the benches being, as we're revitalizing, is also what we consider to be a part of the full structure plan.
Yeah, thank you so much. Um, so now, before we move back to, uh, Counselor Nyman, I just want to make sure that everyone's had their chance, uh, in all fairness. Okay, Counselor Nyman, take it away.
Thank you, Madam Chair, so I got one question, uh, maybe to Madam CAO. So the motion I was gonna make about the, um, uh, parking for limited parking, you know, 10, 15, even a half hour, whatever, you don't want me to make that motion or?
Now, I don't think you really want me to answer that question. Um, so through the, uh, chair to Counselor Nyman, um, uh, as a council, you have any right to put whatever you want to put on the table. I would say that enforcing a temporary parking area in 10 or more locations is not simple. Um, and so I'm not really sure that we've, we've done the thoughtfulness to figure out how to do that. Um, we, we raise, um, around $50,000 a year in revenue from, um, this. There's also the ability to buy a boat launch pass, which gives you unlimited parking all year long. Um, and you don't pay the daily rate, so, uh, but we haven't been able to present you the, the full analysis. So my, my recommendation would be to, uh, wait until that you have that report, but that would not impact this summer because that report won't come till after the summer. So, um, that, that's my expert opinion based on the bigger context, but of course, you may choose to bring a motion forward. Thank you Counselor Nyman.
That's kind of what I was asking is, the report's coming, is that gonna be dealt with in the report or do I have to make the motion?
Through the chair to Counselor Nyman, uh, all of the conversation that we've had at this and frankly several other council and committee meetings that relates to boat launches is all being considered. So you don't need a motion to get it included, we'll certainly take it under advisement.
Okay, then I won't make that motion. I, I won't make the motion about the boat launch, uh, but if I, um, can I make a motion? And I understand what, uh, Counselor Ingelsdorfer is saying about having a, a steward on the beach. But just to comment, um, is, and I, I understand there's a lot of cars there and people can't get to the boat launch, but correct me if I'm wrong, but there is no, you can't use that boat launch during the day from I think like nine o'clock till five in Wellington, is that correct?
Through the chair to the counselor, um, that, uh, that restriction was removed last year, but staff do reserve the right to limit access to that if, uh, it becomes overcrowded. So folks can launch their boats, um, at all hours, I'm not speaking in yes, that's true.
Yep, okay, so that being said, and I know I'm not gonna get any support for it, but I'll put a motion forward.
If you can get a second, go for it.
Just, uh, we use our own resources, um, on the weekends, um, and, and during the week to, instead of hiring a, um, uh, new employee for the, the Wellington Beach, so if I get a second.
Any seconders? Okay, we've got a second or Counselor Harrison, thank you. So, um, any conversation?
Uh, no, I, I think it's all been said, I basically said what I wanted to say, so.
Through the chair to council, so it would read that staff be directed to eliminate the beach steward position and utilize existing staff resources for Wellington Beach. the beach steward position and utilize existing staff resources for Wellington Beach management.
Thank you, Catalina. Uh, Counselor Maynard.
Yeah, just really briefly and, and all due respect, Counselor Nyman. Anybody that, that uses our parks on the weekends in particular, know that our staff is already stretched really beyond their capacity to, to maintain them, which was why I thought it was a good idea that maybe this, you know, in an emergency situation that this one would be able to float. So that's why I won't be supporting it because I've seen how stretched our staff is, especially on the weekends.
Counselor St. Jean.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, just a further question with regards to that motion. Uh, my experience in the past with summer students is municipality tends to re, to, to search out provincial and federal employment grants for students. I'm assuming the same thing will be done here in an attempt to defray some of the costs.
Thank you, C A O Wallace. Uh, through the chair to Counselor St. Jean, yes, we have applied for some funding. Um, uh, but we typically apply for a lot more funding than we actually get for students. More likely, we would direct students to some of the environmental work, like for example, um, removing the parsnip on the Millennium Trail or some of the work related to, um, uh, museums, which sometimes is a little easier to get in terms of targeted funding. So I am not expecting that this position will be grant funded, which is why we put it in the budget for the tourism management plan. If, uh, by chance we manage to get more funding than we expect, then of course we could apply it here, but, um, uh, likely it would be funded under this program.
Okay, yeah, and the, the, but the, the actual cost of a summer student is considerably less than I would suspect redirecting or already stretched, uh, operations employees to, to try to do what, what it is that you, the service enhancement that you're intending to, to provide for Wellington Beach. So, okay, so, yeah, I, I, I won't be supporting Counselor Nyman's motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more comments on or questions about the motion? Okay, uh, oh, Counselor Pennell, quickly, yes?
Yeah, one question. Supposing the service group comes forward and they said, we're willing to look after that to make sure we have, would that go against that or not?
It sounds like there's a service group already working to, to reconnect, but that that might take some time.
Okay.
Perhaps.
You know, not this year. I think we need to show some good faith and, and, you know, put some resources into the beach. We, you know, I, I think Rotary is just feeling discouraged that they're, they're doing work and they're not getting, you know, as much help as they would like with the beach. So I think it's just a, you know, matter of time before they might step back up and, and, and help with some of that, but it's, I, I see it as an interim solution, so.
Thank you. Um, so without further comments, let's, shall we call the vote? Thank you. All in favor? Pardon? Yeah, oh, yeah, no. Thank you. So, um, we have, uh, the main motion, um, which is, who moved that?
Through the chair, Counselor St. Jean and Counselor Maynard.
Thank you very much. So is there any further discussion or are we good to call the vote on that? Okay, we're calling the vote. I see no hands. All in favor? And, and that carries. Uh, now we have hit the two hour mark, so we're technically required to, um, have a quick break. Uh, we've got one item left, but can we just have a very short break and say? Five minutes? Okay, I'm hearing 10 minutes. We're gonna get started again. Have we got everyone we need? Now we've lost. Are we good to get started again? Um, Clark Blumenberg, thank you. So we've lost the C A O. We have Director Cowan joining us. Hello and welcome, Director Cowan. And we will move on to our last item for consideration today, which is a report from Director Cowan's department. Can I get somebody to put 7.2 on the floor, please? And I'll pick, thank you, Counselor Maynard and Counselor St. Jean.
Um, thank you, Madam Chair. Maynard, St. Jean, motion that the report, sorry, reported the Community Services Program Initiatives Department dated March 14th. The council received reports, C S P 06 2024. The council approve a bylaw to regulate temporary outdoor patios on municipal property and private commercial property. That a bylaw to amend by law 168 2023, being the 2024 fees and charges by law to delete and replace schedule F be approved at the March 26, 2024 council meeting and that a bylaw to regulate outdoor patio extensions on municipal property and private commercial property to update the sidewalk patio program be approved at the March 26, 2024 council meeting.
Thank you very much. So, um, we do have Director Cowan here. I don't know if she's planning to do a very short presentation, tiny presentation. She's indicating tiny. So thank you. Take it away, Director Cowan.
Through the chair to the committee, uh, just briefly, wanted to give you an overview on this report. In 2022, council directed staff to review the sidewalk patio bylaw and just some general notes about, um, uh, how we approached this. So this report builds on the findings from the business retention and expansion survey that we undertook in 2023, uh, that talked about, uh, business friendliness and a perceived lack of support at the council level. And this update does seek to work towards being more business friendly, uh, in several different ways. Um, the changes are primarily administrative. Um, the specs, uh, most of the specifications of this, um, program remain the same. We did some broad consultation. We talked to Dun, 10 different teams and departments within the municipality. We spoke to the traffic accessibility and heritage committee. We talked to restaurants, representatives of all businesses through Visit the County, the Picton B I A and the Chamber of Commerce. And we also spoke to, uh, our insurers. Uh, overall, um, everyone was quite supportive of the program carrying on. Um, everyone, uh, mostly championed the vibrancy that it brings to a main street and the traffic calming effect that sidewalk patios have. Uh, but the program, they felt could be tweaked to improve accessibility and reduce the burden for restaurant operators. So, um, the restaurant industry has really had a tough time since COVID. It's taken a long time to recover. They're still in recovery. Uh, they still are dealing with staffing shortages. There is an economic downturn. People are not spending as much money and food as well as other supplies is more expensive for businesses and for residents. So some of the ways that we have, uh, we hope that we can support business with this program is that, um, small things like the application being simpler, being online. So you go online, you fill out your application. Um, we extended the date that the patio program runs, uh, until it was October 15th. It's now November 1st. Um, our shoulder seasons are getting busier. We've heard that a lot today. Um, if by any chance some weather situation, uh, is forecast, uh, there's a caveat within the agreement that they need to be able to shut down and remove their patio, uh, within a three day period. So hopefully we can, um, not have any issues with weather, but be able to extend that program by two weeks. Um, we're revising the fee structure to follow parking rates, which will slightly reduce the cost for operators. Uh, we will meet with applicants onsite. Uh, if there's any new patio or people who would like to have a patio, we meet onsite and we make sure that, uh, they're going to go through the process knowing that, that it's going to work for them and, and what their needs are, especially before they, uh, go out and buy, uh, infrastructure for a patio. And the program is moving from operational services to, um, C S P I, uh, where an established relationship with businesses, uh, already is in place and, uh, and we work with them quite a bit every day. So we hope that that will, will help, uh, with the business friendly approach. Um, there are also some, um, accessibility and safety factors. So, uh, we are going to improve, uh, enforcement. So there are enforcement mechanisms now in the bylaw. Um, we are also going to, in terms of accessibility, have a mandatory, mandatory patio on street, um, rule where site conditions allow. So that is where the patio sits on the street and then there is an, um, a butt out for people to, uh, walk around the patio on the street side. Sometimes that is not possible. Sometimes there are street lamps, parking meters, hydrants, uh, tree cages, et cetera. So that can't be possible. Uh, but where possible in the future, uh, anyone who would like to introduce a new sidewalk patio, uh, would need to, uh, have that mandatory patio on street where possible for accessibility purposes, improved accessibility. Um, and then the, uh, this bylaw also provides the ability to limit the patios within certain stretches of main streets. So, um, there are some busier aspects to, uh, Picton Main Street, for instance. Um, and so staff will be able to, um, at their discretion discern with the help, I would imagine, of fire department. with the help, I would imagine, of fire department and other colleagues, whether or not a patio should be, for instance, at the very top of the Pickton Townhill. So, it would be very unlikely that a sidewalk patio would be allowed there. And this bylaw allows for the provision to be able to make those determinations. And so, those are probably the key changes. Again, we're looking at ensuring that as accessible as possible. Everyone seems to be in agreement that most of our sidewalk patios are patio-on-street, save three, I believe. And that patios actually do have a traffic calming effect. Traffic Advisory Committee was very adamant that it actually makes people slow down when they're on a main street area. So, happy to take any questions.
Excuse me. Thank you very much. So, I've already got a list. I'll add to the list. But we're gonna start with Counselor Nyman.
I won't support this, the patios on the street, because it's taking parking spots away. And I don't know how many times we've had BIA come here and say, "Well, we're not getting the traffic." And because, so we want free parking. Well, you want free parking, but we're taking parking spots away. And these parking spots are ones that could be used for going to the restaurants, going to the stores that want that free parking. So, you know, if the patios were there on the sidewalk, but still left room for pedestrians to walk and provided the parking, I'm all for it. I don't mind patios, but I just, you know, unless we have places that the parking is gonna be closed. And I just don't think we have that. I don't. I think it's Mary Street Parking Lot, it's King Street Parking Lot, behind Main Street, and that parking lot's full all the time. So, that's my reason for not doing it. But you mentioned about restricting patios in a busy part of the downtown, whether it be Pickton or Wellington. So, I'm thinking, and I don't want to center anybody out, but I'm thinking West Street and Wellington, where the patio is right on the corner. You know, and I know there was almost an accident there last year that would've went that patio out. So, are we looking at restricting them at intersections, I guess, would be the question? Or what are we, like, what information do we have that say this is what we are gonna do?
Through the chair to Counselor Nyman. So, great questions. And yes, intersections are definitely one of those places where one could reasonably assume that a patio would not be allowed. But staff would certainly have an internal conversation with the OPP and Emergency Services to make that decision. And in terms of parking spaces, it is certainly a trade-off. So, if we had the same number of patios this year as we did last year, that's 10 parking spaces. So, that's 3.75% of all the parking in Pickton and 2.5% of the parking in Wellington. But businesses and many residents agree that the trade-off is a more activated and vibrant main street, more places to sit out and enjoy Pickton or Wellington. And there's no denying that some parking spots are lost in that plan.
Thank you. Next, we've got Counselor Brainy.
Thank you, Chair McNautin. I am wholeheartedly gonna support this. The one thing I'd like to say, I was in one of those sessions. And what I liked in the initiative that you took, Director Cowan, was that you did a full 360. You included everybody in the discussion to try to make the improvements on this. And while there's always issues, I know Counselor, what Counselor Nyman is bringing, I understand that. But there is an opportunity here to enhance business scenarios during those seasons when we're going to have that. One thing that I did learn in the session, I see it firsthand at the ones I visit in Wellington, it is a traffic calming. I believe, safety-wise, we're actually further ahead, especially on a street like Wellington, where you see the traffic automatically slow down. Let's face it, the Europeans sometimes are so many years ahead of us. They're operating these on narrower streets than ours. And it does offer a vibrancy. It offers an atmosphere that is very welcoming. And it gives an opportunity for businesses that struggle in the months that aren't peak. And I think the tweaks that have been, improvements that have been made to this have included everyone. And I do believe it's a real step forward. And let's give it a try. Like I say, it's always work in progress. Maybe next year, we'll tweak a couple of other things to it. But I love it, and I'm gonna support it.
Thank you very much for your comment. Counselor St. Jean.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for the report, Emily. And yeah, being part of that, one of the working group sessions, I think, was very beneficial for me. Also beneficial was listening to the Accessibility Advisory Committee meeting when they were discussing the issues. It certainly changed my mind. I had a preconceived notion that the walk-around was the better way to go. But hearing those conversations made me rethink that. So, I agree with that process there. And I do think, in the balance of everything, 3.75% of our parking space is being lost for a very short period of time. In balance, it balances. I think that's the best way I can describe that. I do have two questions, and maybe I guess they're both, they're kind of related. Maybe, I'm not sure if I'm misunderstanding this or not, but with regards to the private property licensing, are there fees for inspection? Is that why we're licensing people on their private property? And I'm thinking of a location like in front of the Armory, where there is ample property and it's all privately owned. Should we be licensing them? Is there a reason for us to be licensing them? Again, fees for inspection to make sure that they meet building code and accessibility issues and stuff like that.
Who would like to field that?
Certainly, through the chair. My office deals with the private patio extensions. So, this used to be a service that the province, that the AGCO, the Alcohol Gaming Commission of Ontario, used to be responsible for, which was downloaded during COVID onto municipalities. So, how it works is that it is only on existing private patios that are already licensed. And there is a fee, an inspection fee for building and fire, which is $85 and matches the public patio. And there's also a $35 fee to apply. So, we have been extremely successful with this program. And each year, we see it grow. However, in terms of licensing out front of the Armory, it would have to be connected to an existing patio that is licensed. So, I am not aware if the Crepe Escape, for example, or other businesses are currently licensed through the AGCO for liquor on that premise. Hope that answers your question.
I can answer that. No, they are not licensed. And that is one of the businesses that I was thinking about, because they do put bestow tables out on the, on private property. So, what you're saying is that they would not be required because they do not have an AGCO license?
Exactly. But they could get an AGCO license if they applied. And which, and it is a very clear process to apply for a liquor licensing if they wanted to change their business model to offer alcoholic beverages.
Okay. And the same thing would apply for Lusobites, which is in the basement at the back. And they do have a patio out there. They are not licensed.
For specific questions about specific locations, maybe that's a great conversation.
Okay. So, yeah, I just wanted clarity around that part with that. So...
Did you have another quick question?
With regards to the, I'll call it clustering of patios, particularly on Pickton Main Street. So, is it the intent, because you're saying that you're not going to be adding more in cluster, in identified clustering areas. So, if a business decides they don't want to do one for a year, are we now going to be eliminating, not illuminating, eliminating that opportunity in that area based on the fact that there's, I'll say, too many in one area causing other issues?
Through the chair to Counselor St. Jean. Not necessarily. So, there are actually very few locations on Pickton Main Street that remain, that could probably even take a patio, to be fair. So, that sort of makes it almost a moot point. So, if one was removed and another business wanted to open or create a patio on the sidewalk, and it worked in terms of the inspection, in terms of being able to use the space, then by all means, they would if they adhere to everything in the application. But I am not sure there are many locations where you would have an issue with any further clustering of patios than we have right now.
Okay. All right. Great. That's great. Otherwise, I think this is a great program. I, again, I enjoyed being part of the conversation and certainly listening to others during the working group sessions. And as an FYI, I've heard nothing from business owners that is negative about what you're proposing. So, no bad news is good.
Thank you, Counselor St. Jean. Counselor Harrison?
Yes, I have two questions of the director. In this is a worst-case scenario situation. But who is liable if a vehicle comes up the street and plows through one of these patios? What's the insurance situation?
Through the chair to Counselor Harrison. I'm just trying to think if I know enough of the details of the insurance aspect of it to be able to answer that question adequately. But I will tell you that we are fully insured and that, obviously, that shouldn't be a surprise. And the patios exist on municipal property. So, at the end of the day, it would be our municipal insurance. I would imagine that would accept that. Might the clerk may want to add some information there?
Through the chair, just to add to what Director Cowan is saying. All public patio licenses also have to have $2 million general liability insurance with the county named as, like, an insurer. So, they would be responsible should something happen, worst-case scenario, as the first. Because their insurance covers their program. Does that make sense?
Yeah. I might add that this day and age, $2 million is, in a situation like that, would be next to nothing. Okay. I'll move on from there. You've answered that.
So, Navek, just to sit on that for two seconds. If it is possible to, if you're interested in ensuring with our lawyer that that is, that that is correct and reasonable, just to get clarity before we actually see this at council.
I just don't want to see us getting in a situation for 10 patios where we're exposing ourselves to tremendous liability. And I can't see that much, as much liability on the sidewalk patio side of it as on the street ones.
Director Cowan?
Yes, through the chair to Counselor Harrison. I completely understand what you're saying. And we have had many conversations with our insurer and with our municipal lawyer. There's always a risk, and there has been since this program existed or began to exist in 2013. That risk really has not changed. But as with any type of use of public property by the public, there is that risk involved. But we have certainly dotted our i's and crossed our t's and talked to the insurance company at length. And they really did not have or foresee any issues with liability. And municipalities across Ontario and Canada all have very similar programs in place.
Okay. Well, there must be something. But the very fact we license something basically increases our exposure. And that's all. That's one question that I think should be a good, clear, a clearer answer on, so to speak, that in this scenario, should it happen, hopefully never does, then we just don't want to get caught. The other thing in regard to the 3-point-whatever percent we're losing, I was looking at an old photo of Pickton. And I can remember, there was angle parking. Now, with the exception of Sam Groso's car, I wonder if we could maybe take a look at that again. Cars are a little shorter these days. If, how many more parking spaces we would get on Main Street with angle parking on the right-hand side like it used to be? Because it used, one of the drawbacks at one point was the meters were in place. But with the meters we have now, there shouldn't be any hold-up on perhaps getting that in place, something like that, to try to expand the number of parking spaces. And anyway, it's just a thought that could be looked at.
Are you looking for an answer, or you just want to leave that? Great.
There wouldn't be an answer, because they'd have to look into it.
Thank you, Counselor Pennell.
Yeah. One of my biggest concerns is when these patios are built, who is gonna ensure that they're right? Last summer, they built a patio down on Main Street here. They put clear plywood on it. I come to Pickton one day, and it's just steaming rain. Soon as I headed, I was on my butt, cane and all, the cane slipped on. I called the county, and I explained it. I was told, within two days, they got back, "Oh, we've taken care of that. It shouldn't have been plywood." I was down probably a month later. Same plywood is still there. I was just outright lied to. And as far as I'm concerned, there should be one standard policy. This is how you build a patio, it's safe, and this is how you don't. And if we don't back it up and somebody gets hurt, bad.
Director Cowan, would you like to talk about the oversight? Thank you.
Through the chair to Counselor Pennell. I'm sorry to hear that that happened. And one of the reasons why we have made this bylaw more robust in terms of having some enforcement included in the bylaw for the first time will make it a lot easier to ensure that folks who have their patios in place are adhering to the specifications that have been laid out, engineered specifications. And if they don't, then there are consequences, which are outlined in the bylaw. And we also will continue to inspect and re-inspect, which is why we've also added a fee to the bylaw. So, if we have to keep going back to the same business to talk about non-compliance, there is a charge for staff time in order to do that.
Quick follow-up. Yeah.
That's all great. But the minute they go in, somebody should know whether it's going in right or wrong. Any dummy on the street could tell you that, to be honest. I could tell you that, speaking of the dummy on the street.
Thank you for sharing your experience. Oh, sorry.
But, haven't said that.
Haven't said that.
Another point that comes to question is, in Wellington, in the past, they had a patio set up in a no-loading zone. The sign stayed there the whole time the patio was up. And yet, when I read the new thing, was that not included before? That there's certain sections you can't put, that may be what eliminates it.
Through the chair to Counselor Pennell. So, yes, there are very specific places that you cannot put a sidewalk patio. Anywhere where there are hatchmarks on the, on the street that allow for a line of sight, for instance, near intersections or around the town hill, for instance. So, no, there are very specific places where you have to put your patios. Yeah.
Thanks. Thanks very much. Counselor Maynard is next.
Thank you. Just briefly on the liability. I'm assuming that driver's liability would kick in first if you leave the traveled portion of the road. So, we might have that in our back pocket. And I do want to chime in on the fact that those consultation sessions were excellent. And we can, I think we can all see pieces of what we had wanted in there, but that it's, but it's a nice, a nice balance. And certainly, the preference to move to the patios being on the And certainly the preference to move to the patios being on the street for accessibility. And I'm hoping that you'll be able to try to facilitate that wherever possible, even if there's some small encumbrances. I just don't want people to use, you know, like certainly you can work around a planter or a tree and still have, they're actually a nice natural part of a patio. I'm a little concerned on the, that there's no time limit on the, for the limit on the density anticipated. You know, do you have in mind a limit of the number of patios that might, might trigger a review if you happen to get a little raft?
Through the chair to Counselor Maynard. We thought about putting a limit in place, but again, there are really so few locations left for a patio to be eligible to be placed, that we don't really think that it's even necessary.
And just a quick follow up on that. Yeah, so it says that the bylaw itself, you're looking at a five-year review on the timeline. But I'm assuming you're still really going to be doing ongoing review, and if necessary, that it could change prior to that five years?
Through the chair to Counselor Maynard. We review our programs annually anyway, and we're always looking to make tweaks where possible. But this would be a full-on review that would be completed in time to present it to council in 2029.
And it is nice to note that sidewalks that are on, that are on the sidewalk, or patios that are on the sidewalk actually use one less parking space. So the more of those we get, the more parking we maintain.
Thank you. Counselor Grosso is next, followed by Counselor Roberts.
Yeah, I am all for this. And Counselor Harrison, if you're looking at an old picture, they were all long cars back in the day. Yeah, I'm all for this because, you know, bars and restaurants, they're still trying to recover from that crazy COVID period. So having a patio really helps them out, really helps out that season. The question I have, though, is their insurance, is it for the year that they're taking out that insurance on that extra patio space, or is it just from May 1st to November 1st?
Through the chair to Counselor Grosso. I don't specifically know if that, if it's for a full year or just for the time of the patio. And I'm looking to my colleague to know if you can remember off the top of your head if insurance is covering just the time that the patio is in use. Sorry.
Through the chair to Counselor Grosso. On the bylaw, it just says that it's during the time of the program, so while it is in use.
Right.
Thank you.
And then during the application, you're seeing that policy and you're seeing it, the dates that, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And we've got Counselor Roberts.
Thank you. It's a great report, Emily, and thank you to you and your staff. I just think it's a great report. I can't, I can't do my own report that's in any way scientific or as thorough as yours, but I can say that patios are a must for at least most of the hospitality businesses along Main Street that I pop in and out of. In fact, several of them, the business owners actually ask me, I mean, I don't solicit comments on patios, but I've been asked several times now, when is the patio program going to start? When is it going to be implemented? It's really important to our business. I know that council's going to be considering something, but we need to get this going. We need to get the patios going. So yeah, I support it. Most importantly, it's the only way I'm going to get a particular provincial politician to buy me a beer and burger, because apparently his condition is that it has to be on a county patio. So I'm motivated to have this approved. Thank you.
Good luck with that. Good luck with that. I think you should have some choices available. Thank you. Is there anyone who would like to add anything further for round one? Or can we move on? I believe there's a lineup already for round two. Okay. I do have a quick comment. Thank you for your careful listening to accessibility, the Accessibility Committee, and one of the transportation experts on the traffic committee regarding the accessibility needs and the simplest approach, simplest and safest approach to honor the needs of our residents with accessibility concerns. And thank you for the understanding the need for an increase in oversight to ensure what Counselor Pennell brought up, which is surface, all of those design specifications, like surfaces that are safe and that are, you know, made of safe materials and level materials. And I would also like to join the chorus to say that the consultation was extremely helpful and collaborative, and I appreciate it also. Thank you. Round two, we head over to Counselor St. Jean.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And just a brief question for the clerk, giving you a heads up. It's my understanding through conversation with Mike Kelly that there's an ongoing staff review of Main Street parking, or actually parking as a whole. With Main Street, it's to try and identify ways that we can kind of reconfigure Main Street to use some of the, I'll say, useless parcel, pieces of the street, generally the end of walkways. We have no parking zones. We can, you know, the conversation I had is about gaining two or three or four spots across the entirety. Can you, I don't expect you to elaborate on it because I know it's a work in progress, but that's my understanding, that we're looking at something like that right now.
Through the chair, I was not aware of that. However, we are conducting an audit on accessible parking spots. And I can confirm that this program, and in the conversations that staff have had with bylaw enforcement, they will not impact each other, and they will actually synergize and coincide with each other on the proposed spots that will come forward for council decision in the future.
Thank you. And I did forget about the accessible part. That's what was driving it. But yes, it's my understanding that there may, we may be able to gain a few spots, not just necessarily accessible spots, with a proper redesign that most likely won't include angle parking. I don't know how that's going to work, given the size of the tractor trailers that come down Pickton Main Street right now.
Thanks very much. Is that, is that, I don't see any more hands, so I think we're gonna, I'm gonna call the vote, all in favor of the motion before us? All in favor? Let's just see hands, just to make sure. Thank you. Okay, that carries. Thanks very much. We have one final order of business, which is to adjourn. Counselor St. Jean standing in for Counselor Brandhorst, and Counselor Engels Dorfer standing in for Counselor Prinsen.
Okay. This is a St. Jean Engels Dorfer motion that this meeting now adjourn at 3:57 PM.
Thank you. All in favor? I don't see a full show of hands. Come on. All in favor? Very good. Thank you. That carries.
There you go.